To the October 21st meeting of the Portland City Council, would you please call the roll?
Novick.
Fritz.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman. Hales.
Here. Good morning, everyone. And Commissioner Novick is here. Welcome, everyone. We have our agenda before us this morning, and we'll start in a few minutes with communications items. We have a process in Portland whereby people can sign up for three minutes on the council calendar, and some people have done so, so we'll hear from them first. Then we'll take up our regular agenda. If you're here to speak on a regular agenda item, just let our council clerk know, and she'll get you on the list. You need only give your name unless you're representing an organization. You don't need to give us your address and all that, but just give us your name for the record when you come up to speak. We follow the rules of decorum in this room, so if you agree with someone and want to demonstrate it, feel free to give them a thumbs up or a wave of the hand. And if you disagree, feel free to give a polite negative hand gesture. But we ask that we not make vocal demonstrations in favor or against our citizens' points of view here, so that everybody can be heard. And that's about all the procedure there is to it. So again, welcome, everyone, and we'll begin with item 1056.
Request of Lightning Watchdog X to address council regarding Lightning Watchdog X disrupts Uber and Lyft.
Morning.
Morning. My name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Watchdog PDX. One of the concerns I have with Uber and Lyft, the TNC company, is, again, during the pilot project, we're losing too many profits to the traditional cab companies. And I feel the traditional cab companies themselves are losing valuation at a very rapid pace. In my opinion, possibly thirty to fifty percent at this time. Again, I've had an issue on the caps, and I really don't want the floodgate open for Uber and Lyft, allowing them as many drivers as they possibly want. I want to have a little bit more sensibility on the cap issue. I want more data provided. I'd like to see Uber and Lyft at a cap-permitted drivers, Uber two-hundred-and-fifty, Lyft two-hundred-and-fifty, until we're done with the pilot project and have a clear understanding that I think the direction we're going is that our public transportation is going to be jeopardized, pertaining to Triment Max, streetcar bus. When Uber and Lyft, if they begin to flood the market with their drivers, eventually what they're going to do is begin to target public transportation. As you know, my understanding, they're in negotiations with the Timbers, possibly, to work out something. They're going to be negotiating in a lot of different areas to take that business away from the public transportation. So when the consumers think that without a cap and we just flood the market with additional drivers, that's to your benefit, it's going to drop down the prices. Think again. Because when public transportation begins to lose profits, we're going to come back to you and ask you to start paying the losses. We're going to come back to you and start asking you to start paying the deferred maintenance, because we can't sustain the systems. We have billions and billions of dollars tied up into the transportation system. We cannot jeopardize it. We cannot look at projected incomes on doing new developments and say, hey, we're going to meet certain numbers on those new developments based upon projections, when we're not doing the data with Uber and Lyft involved in the picture. Uber and Lyft is the greatest threat to public transportation in the city of Portland. And if we don't have the data to substantiate that I am wrong, I do not recommend that we allow Uber and Lyft to stay in the market without caps when the pilot program ends. That would be a level playing field, also like the traditional taxi cab companies have. And Uber and Lyft need to have a cap put in position to understand what it's going to do in the future on public transportation. And we can get that data from other states. And again, they're beginning to focus on that profit, and it will hurt the city of Portland. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 1057, please.
Request of M. Shane Rosen to address council to present a poem.
Here. Okay, well, we'll look forward to that another time. 1058, please.
Request of Landon K. Crowell to address council regarding progress on his housing project in Central Eastside.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Hales. My name is Landon K. Crowell, and last time I was here, I asked for support of my housing development on Twelfth and Ankeny. Since then, I managed to raise eighty-five percent of my project cost. My project goals were to provide affordable housing, utilization of MW-ESB workforce, and green development in Central Eastside. I asked for financial support of one-point-five million. Mayor Hales, you said you would review my material and get back to me. Unfortunately, that didn't happen.
You haven't heard back yet?
No, no, sir, no.
Oh, okay. Well, Commissioner Saltzman's not here, but we'll make sure that happens.
However, Shannon from Commissioner Saltzman did get back to me. And she reached out to me and listened to my complaint, as she briefly laughed at the blase response of PHB. My complaint consisted of PDC and PHB refusing to allow me to apply for financing and support that was advertised to be available. When I called the U.S. Department of Housing, they informed me both agencies were practicing comparative discrimination. You see, with both agencies, when I tried to inquire about financial support, they would not return my calls or my emails, but only would return the calls and emails of my architect, who happened to be white. These acts from PDC and PHB are familiar. Since the flood of '48, black families have been displaced from here to there by the acts of these agencies, however, always managing to survive and raise a family. While in the seventies and currently, we experienced various forms of redlining. The lie that blacks moved out because they couldn't afford it was just not true. For generations, we have had no access to capital. These same neighborhoods were classified as distressed. Banks wouldn't invest in them until white loan applicants made application. Every area in the city of Portland, once deemed distressed and turned into an urban renewal area, has reduced the minority population to less than five percent. They've done this through redlining. The propaganda of equity and diversity championed by the city of Portland seems more like just a red herring. Perhaps this is why no one in the black community believes when the community says it will do this or that. It leaves one disenfranchised. Advertising opportunities for minority communities in minority communities in minority publications shouldn't seem so calculated if equity and diversity were a priority to this council. So, I propose something new. I propose city support of my minority develop project with forty percent MW-ESB workforce, green development. I want to put some people to work. I think that if you provide living ways jobs for people, it does more than a housing discount. I present an opportunity. I'd just like to know what council will do.
Thank you. Well, if you're talking to Shannon in Dan's office, you're talking to the right person, because the PDC sends all of its affordable housing funds to the Housing Bureau. So you're in the right place if you're in that conversation with her.
Okay. Nothing's happened since then.
Well, keep talking with her.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, 1059.
Request of Mary Eng to address council regarding Black Lives Matter.
Good morning. Welcome.
Hi. It's a pleasure to see you all and an honor to speak before this body. I would like to draw attention to the fact that Teresa Raeford online is organizing a Dawson Park event tomorrow at four. It's near North Williams, and it is in support of the Black Lives Matter issue. I would also like to invite the council personally to the 2:00 p.m. court date with Judge Simon in the U.S. District Court. It's courtroom thirteen B. At 2:00 p.m., allow time for security. You will also need to have a valid ID. And then I would also like to move to the issue of reparations for slavery in Jamaica, and how this all ties in to why Black Lives Matter, is that we have a very important thing called loyalty, and that's loyalty what is good and right. When my grandpa, Ransome Eng, signed a loyalty oath to work in his job for the CIA, he disavowed any affiliation with hate organizations, socialist parties, et cetera. And there was a long laundry list, which my father then also signed when he briefly worked there. And when we have an officer, Carl Kruger, who was supportive of the Mugolara Serau hate crime murder White-Aryan Resistance Body as they dealt with a civil case, we clearly have a breach of national security. When we have German politicians knifed, we have historic cases like the knifing of Anna Lind or the death of Olive Palmer. We have FBI warning the Norwegian government that Anders Breivik is a high-level security risk in terms of the neo-Nazi threat as it emerges. With the war-torn issue in Syria with massive refugee crisis like none other since the time of World War II, we must understand that the Portland Police Union's co-opting of the Black Lives Matter zeitgeist is an insult. It is interpreted as an affront to the indignity and injustice of the continued ongoing murders of black people. And when an officer such as Jason Sari, who killed James DeJah Perez in Portland, can move over to Beaverton and work a security event for a sitting senator, Ron Wyden, and Wyden doesn't have the courtesy to get back with me as to why he has a killer at an event where his previous event in Portland was taken over by the courageous activism of Black Lives Matter, we have to see that we are in a sorry state of affairs for our security and for our adherence to the Civil Rights Act and the larger issues which are at play, which arise from the Magna Carta. And so I do humbly ask you here, my learned city council, to not make a joke of Black Lives Matter. To not make a joke of Black Lives, to not make a joke of the Department of Justice lawsuit, to recognize they have shortcomings. They were afraid of the tinderbox of Ferguson. You could feel the pulse of the nation. We are tired of the killings. I am tired that a black boy was lynched in my neighborhood when I was seven. I'm tired that the racists wouldn't play with me, and my mother had to explain that to me when I was three years old. I will respect the time limit, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care. Okay, 1060.
Request of Christina Albo to address council regarding restorative justice in schools.
Good morning.
Good morning. I would like to request to share my time with one of our youth leaders, Mariah Cooper, if that's okay?
Certainly, welcome.
Thanks. Good morning, Mayor Hales and Commissioners Fritz, Saltzman, Novick, and Fish. Fritz and Fish, I always get that. My name is Christina Albo, and I am the Director of Restorative Justice at Resolutions Northwest. As you know, the city of Portland began funding our school-based restorative justice work in 2008 as a pilot initiative in Park Rose Middle School. The $28,000 the city has contributed since that time has been foundational in planting seeds throughout the city. Since 2008, and with additional funding from foundations and school districts, we have expanded our work. We have worked in varying capacities in Park Rose, David Douglas, Portland Public, Reynolds, and Centennial School districts, going from a budget of $56,000, which was initially funded by the city and county, to now a budget of $500,000. Now, given that growth in our work, you may think that the city's funding is no longer needed. But I'm here to urge you to continue to plant those seeds by approving the $28,000 in the fall bump, and here is why. While initially the city's dollars funded a school-based practitioner in one building in the Park Rose Middle School, now the city's funding provides support, building capacity with youth, families, and advocates throughout the city. For example, we've been in the process of building a youth action team, where youth from various schools we are working with throughout the city develop leadership to identify and address issues that they face. For two years in a row, we have been able to take these young leaders to Camp Namanu to build trust and leadership on a ropes course a thousand feet above the Sandy River. Additionally, now that schools and districts see the positive impact of restorative justice in their schools, they are willing to match the city dollars. For example, Centennial School District paid to send a number of administrators and teachers to one of our trainings. And in turn, with the city dollars, we were able to provide consultation and facilitation support on a major issue that Centennial Park School wanted to resolve restoratively. Similarly, a Reynolds School paid for a teen to attend one of their trainings. The city dollars in turn have provided a series of professional developments, sessions to facilitate dialogue among classroom teachers around how racism and implicit bias unintentionally create enormous barriers for youth of color to succeed in school and in turn contribute to the school-to-prison pipeline. These drops of water ripple out in unimaginable ways. For example, a librarian who is also a minister has brought these conversations to his congregation. Speaking of youth leadership, at my side I have Mariah Cooper, who is an amazing youth leader, and I'd like for her to share her story as well.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. So I was a student at David Douglas High School, where Maria Scannelli, a restorative justice coordinator, welcomed me into her first-ever restorative justice class. While being there, I served as a leader on campus where we would strive to incorporate and maintain restorative justice practices throughout the school. Currently, I'm a junior at Warner Pacific College seeking my social science work degree. And just recently, I wrote a poem that I would like to share with you all.
Please, and let's turn off the timer, because we always give students extra.
Thanks. It's called "Dream Big. Dream Big, Dream Proud, Dream Loud. Tell everyone to gather round, because we've got dreams to achieve by the pounds. Our feet are on the ground. One day, we will wrap the underrepresented, present them as a gift. Together, we can lift. Together, we can shine light on tragedy. It's just a mentality, especially when it's appearance versus reality. I claim it's a mentality, a living opportunity, to engage on a daily basis where we don't exclude any races or faces. We're here together, so let's form together. Let's walk our talk and talk where we walk, because together we are the glue of the various colors of chalk. So let's illustrate new messages that embrace creativity, diminish all the negativity, uphold and lift with tranquility. To facilitate honest dialogue is not easy, but we're here to manage and engage meaningfully on a level engraved within us. To serve, it's meant for us. I woke up this morning and claimed it was my purpose, and everything else I could do in the world was claimed worthless. It's our mission, our vision, our values, our deepest passion. Let's be what we say we are on paper. Those words we shall never taper. We wouldn't be here if we didn't dream magic, because we didn't notice the tragic. Let us, because we noticed the tragic, let us embrace the havoc in our communities through unity. Embrace our capacity to the fullest extent means to be transparent, open, and honest about our failures and our learnings. Hurry all, let's engage, we're burning. I need you, you need me. It's nothing but a dream until we all see. Dream big, dream proud, dream loud."
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much.
Let's suspend the rules. Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, let's move, please, to our...
Mayor, Mr. Rosen has arrived. Item 1057.
Sure, please.
1057, Request of M. Shane Rosen to address council to present a poem.
This seems to be the morning for poetry. Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor Hales, Commissioners. Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to present a poem and talk about granting grace. But that's what I really want to talk about. It's grace today. And I made a little handout. I would ask that you would give me just a few extra minutes. I have prepared a succinct presentation, and I'd like to...
Try to keep it...
I will keep it as clean and as fast as I can.
We'll bend the rules and give you four minutes instead of three.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
All right.
So I want to talk about grace today. That's really what I want to talk about. The first page of that handout is some definitions of grace and a couple of articles about how forgiveness, practicing forgiveness increases healing. And when I was last in here, I was at my State of the City address, and I declared the city in peril shortly thereafter. You declared a state of a housing emergency, which I've been trying to address for a long time. So that's great. I want to commend you on the forward action that you're taking. That's the kind of grace that I'm talking about. The poem that I'm going to read, I read in 1997 in this very room to Mayor Katz. And it was sparked in part by the death of Karen Holtz, who was a bicycle racer in town and engaged person in the community. And she was killed by a drunk driver on Marine Drive on a Sunday afternoon. And the way that the bicycling community responded was by reaching out to the drunk driver's family who had lost their breadwinner. And that's the kind of grace that we need to get out of the trouble that we're in with the police and the housing and the economy. And so that's what I want to talk about, is grace. And this poem is a way that I want to address that. And then I have just a few other thoughts after the poem that I'd like to share. So in the Oregonian, in February of 97 or April of 97, there was a little fact, there used to be the Edge, and it had little factoids. And three of those were the portion of the world's monarch butterfly population that froze to death in a freak Mexican snowstorm. And it was seventeen percent of the monarch butterfly in one snowstorm. So we know how perilous it is these days. That was 20 years ago. The ozone hole over the Antarctica is 10,000 square miles. And the distance that a human can travel on the energy equivalent of a gallon of gasoline is 930 miles. So that's the title of this poem, "930 Miles per Gallon." "Desire for bike streets is causing me to see red. I said to Fred, 'I'd give my blood.' To Kenneth, I saith, 'I'm ready to take a bridge as our hostage,' which got up Ira's ire. But I challenge us to risk facing up to transportation injustice. All rated second-class, we're indignant cyclists. The laws are unjust by design, ever putting life and limb on the line. Indignants growing into intolerance. We refuse this bike lane dance. Take that meager six-inch strip of paint and, well, put it where the sun ain't. We're done with that compromise. We don't believe the lies. You decry with your mouth a love for the bicycle, but you're fair with petrol. Babe, you're just a gigolo. All you can build is car parks and highways." This is 20 years old. "A few miles of bike lanes and you widen every byway. We're tired of this blank. We're not going to take it. Give us the dignity of our self-responsibility, because cyclists see another scene: transportation, separation, apart from the death machine. This petrol addiction is killing all that we love: green things, two legs, four legs, swimmers below, winged above. We don't seek to deny the privilege to drive, but fair share of the road you'd better give, or you have us to thank for the candy bar in your tank. If you refuse our demand to implement a bike-streets plan, there'll be a riot at hand, and we'll only get louder. In fact, we became bike-louder. And if it's a hostile takeover, we'll extradite you and your car to somewhere in Antarctica, under a ozone hole, 10 million square miles you can drive in high style. But instead, let's stick together. The change to weather, 10%, 7% of the pavement, as I figure."
Thank you.
So if you look on the next page, this is where I got to get to.
Okay, well, we'll have to take another time to get you back.
Can I please just make this one point? Can I please just...
We gave you four minutes. We can't start doing that. So I really appreciate your poem. It was wonderful. We will look through your materials, and we'll certainly give you another opportunity to come back. But we can't bend them any further than that. I'm sorry.
You can. Actually, you can, but I'll have to sign up and finish this presentation at another time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, let's move to our consent calendar, and then we'll go to our time-certain item. Let's see. I have one request. Actually, I made it to pull item 1066 to the regular calendar so it can go with 1070 and 1071, because they should have all been on the regular calendar together. That was just a mistake. Any other changes to the consent calendar or things to remove to regular? Okay, unless there are any requests for that, we'll take a vote now on the balance of the consent calendar.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Hales?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, time certain, 1061.
Proclaim October 29, 2015, to be the city's Day of Giving.
Well, this is a good day. This is something that we do each year to kick off our city charitable campaign. It runs from now to November 10. Maybe not everyone is familiar with this, but each year we partner with a whole set of umbrella organizations, representing hundreds of charities. So we do that through an umbrella process where we group them. Employees then have an opportunity to donate to any of those charities through payroll deductions. This year, there are about 500 local, national, and international charities represented through those 16 organizations. And sometime today, every city employee is going to receive a flyer that explains the program and gives people the opportunity to participate. So I want to thank everyone who has participated last year, as well as anyone who's donating this year. And I'll read the proclamation, and I'm not sure if we're going to have anyone from OMF or otherwise come up and talk more about it, but I'll read this, and we'll launch the campaign. Yes, here comes Jane. "Whereas the city's charitable campaign was established in 1989 by then-commissioner Mike Lindberg as an opportunity for employees to give money to charities through a payroll deduction. And whereas the city's charitable campaign represents an easy and important avenue for city employees to support the charities in their community that matter most to them. And whereas 16 charities will participate in this year's campaign, most of which are umbrella organizations representing multiple charities, and whereas more than 500 charities are represented, these groups help make positive changes in areas including child abuse prevention, environment, education, health, social justice, equity, world, human rights, hunger, housing, and access to arts and culture. And whereas last year, 479 city employees donated nearly $250,000 to local, national, and international charities through the campaign. And whereas city employee donations have totaled over $1.3 million over the last five years. And whereas the commitment to charitable giving is demonstrated by these employees every year, and whereas city employees have a third payday in October, and that day is October 29, 2015, now therefore I, Charlie Hales, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim the day of October 29, 2015, to be the city's Day of Giving, and encourage city employees to observe this day by participating in the city's charitable campaign." Welcome Jane Brayton.
Well, thank you very much. I'm Jane Brayton from OMF Business Operations. We have the pleasure of managing the city's charitable campaign. Just wanted to take a moment to thank the council again for your support. We were here asking your support for an ordinance for us to go forward. We're very excited about this year's campaign. And just on a personal note, we have had employees share with us the comments that they've made about how important this is to them. One of them said, "I know I'm very fortunate to have my job, and giving a small portion of my salary to charity is the very least I can do." Another person said, "As a city employee, the public pays my salary. The charitable campaign is an easy and painless way for me to pay it back." And then finally, I think this resonates with a lot of city employees, but someone shared with us on our poster that people will be receiving, "There aren't enough hours in the day to volunteer for every cause I want to support, but through charitable giving, I contribute to many organizations." So those are employees that are in your bureaus, and we look forward to this year's campaign and thank the council very much for your support.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
I know we're not supposed to lobby.
Go ahead.
I was at a Work for Art cabinet yesterday, meeting. And this year, the goal of Work for Art is to reach a million-dollar plateau. And that money in turn goes into the schools and funds local nonprofits. We're in a friendly competition with Moheem County, and we are slightly ahead of them this year and last year. And so I'm proud to have a deduction on my paycheck for this program, Work for Art. But there's an advantage also that you get, which is you get the Arts Card. And if you donate $60 or more a year, you get the Arts Card, which makes you eligible for two-for-one tickets at all the great events in Portland. And that's about as good a deal as you can get. So I would just urge people to, as they go through the list of all the wonderful organizations, think about whether Work for Art is something you want to support this year.
Great. Thank you. Jane, thank you so much for your leadership on this. I'll be very happy to give you the official proclamation, and we look forward to getting the flyer and signing up to do the right thing. Thank you. Good work. Okay, let's see. It is 10 o'clock, so we can move to time certain, item 1062.
1062, Direct the Office of Management and Finance to solicit bids for the Portland Building Reconstruction Project in an amount not to exceed $195 million, with construction to be completed no later than 2020.
Call up our chief administrative officer and his team to make a presentation. Actually, you should go ahead and read the other two as well while they're coming up.
1063, Direct the Office of Management and Finance to develop office space rates for specific city-owned or city-leased facilities located in the central business district to achieve rate equalization. And 1064, Direct the Office of Management and Finance to develop a 1% for community opportunities and enhancements proposal for the Portland Building Reconstruction Project.
Well, welcome and good morning. This is a very important decision for the city This is a very important decision for the city that our chief administrative officer and some great citizens who've come forward to help him as volunteers to figure out what our options are have done together. And I just want to thank both of you and Fred, you and all of your team for bringing the options forward that you think are the most responsible and for now us to give the private sector a chance to respond and tell us what they can do to help fix the building and put it right and put the city in a position to do its work for the next 100 years. So this is one of those long-term investments that done right will make a big difference. I think we all wish it had been done right the first time, but now we have a chance to get it right. And I think with your good leadership and support, we will. So thank you for the good work and explain what's before us, please.
Okay, thank you very much. Fred Miller from Office of Management and Finance. My security person here is Tom Walsh, who's also on our advisory committee, and you'll hear from him in a minute. I've had a chance to speak to all of you about the resolutions, and I don't want to go into too much detail, given that we've had some individual meetings, but I know that not everyone in the listening audience has heard all of this. So I want to say what I see as the game plan, and then I know you'll get, or I suspect you'll get some public comments. There are three resolutions, and simply stated. One of them directs us to renovate the Portland Building for no more than $195 million and finish by the end of 2020. The second one is to equalize rates for city bureaus within the Central Business District. And the third one has to do with community benefits or community enhancements and directs us to, or you would assign 1% of the construction costs to that purpose, and then directs us to have a process to talk to all of the interested parties to develop a recommendation to you on how that money would be allocated. And I would expect to go through each of these. Every one of us will take five minutes or less, I think, in the presentation. So I'd like to think that within a half hour, you'll have heard about the three resolutions, hear public comment, and then hopefully make decisions, if that's where you would like to proceed. Please. In terms of the project itself, you'll recall, given our work sessions, that we started off with an idea when I took this job of spending $95 million to repair this, to improve the seismic, repair the leaks, and the cost of move employees out of the building and back in. And we looked for alternatives, since that was the only thing I saw on the table in front of me at the time. And we appointed an advisory committee from the private sector to examine all of the alternatives. And what evolved was, for a variety of reasons, the best alternative would be to invest in this, in the Portland Building. And it spanned, at that time, the estimate was $175 million, but we're saying 195, given that those numbers are a year or two old. And I'm not sure we're going to make it to 195, but we're saying no more than. So what our project would do now is take care of the leaks, address the seismic, replace the mechanical electric plumbing, which needs to be done, hopefully get some very livable office space, and look at floors one and two to make them better community spaces, which I think is necessary. So we can do all of that while preserving the architectural integrity of the building. And it does also, as a handout I gave you during the work session, captures a number of values or policies of the city. We would preserve the adjacency to City Hall, which is important to a number of people. There's a longstanding policy of having a government center where civic buildings are within this center, whether they're federal, state, or city. It's the best green alternative, the best use of resources. It is accessible by public transit, and it does preserve an asset that's on the historic register. And beyond all that, and I was thinking there's a decent argument, even if it were less expensive to go somewhere else, we couldn't do that consistent with the government center policy, if it were, but it happens to be the best financial deal as well as providing all of these values. So we're looking for a decision to move ahead, and it doesn't mean it's the last time you get a chance to address the Portland Building because we have an RFP out now for an owner's representative. You would get to approve that. We would have a design-build relocate contract you'd get to approve, bond authorization you'd get to approve. So you'll have a chance to see that. But what it does for me, and I'm sure Tom will address this because it originally was his idea, was to say, let's put a stake in the ground on not spending for everything. Look at trade-offs, make it fit within that amount, and let's get it done by a given date because these things can drag on. And I think it gives us an ability to manage the project and get to the outcome. I would add one more thing, that as we're looking at design-build relocate, there's a convincing argument that we could do some of the reconstruction in the building with employees still in the building. And depending on how you do the seismic improvements, there are ways to not just completely empty the building. And my hope would be that, given that we have about a $30 million item for moving employees out and back, that we could save millions on that if we could reconstruct it with some employees remaining in the building. So that's our intention, and that's what that resolution would do. Tom.
Fred, thank you very briefly. Fred has assembled a small committee, not too small, but small committee of advisors. And in essence, we bring three things to the table. One is experience. Part of experience is you've done things where you've made mistakes, where you've had nearly life-threatening experiences, and you know how not to repeat them. I think that will turn out to be quite valuable to Fred. Second, we bring collectively real determination as to schedule and budget. In Fred's opening comments, he used a word which I almost never use, which is hopefully. I have no hope about this. I have a plain determination, and so does the advisory committee. The budget is $195 million, not to exceed, period, in a schedule which is the fall of 2020, and not to change. That is not to say with the diverse constituencies, both employees of the city who occupy the building, the public who has considerable interactions within the building, won't continuously and appropriately bring things that we may not have anticipated today. That is a given. It happens on every project. It is never a surprise. Only the dimension and the detail of the issue is possibly a surprise. They do not impact schedule or budget. There are trade-offs that have to be made. Literally, they will be made up until the last month of the construction process, but the budget and the schedule does not change. And I think collectively, the advisory committee can help Fred and the really very talented city team that's undertaking what I've said to you before, I think is one of the more challenging construction projects in the city's history.
Yes, please.
Tom, you're a very experienced developer, so you've brought the wisdom of having done complex development to this assignment. And I know we've had lots of conversations about this, but this may be the first time the public actually engages on it. So I want to just ask you to respond to the two comments that I hear most frequently when I talk to people who maybe aren't following it that closely, so that you're getting sort of their common sense view of it. The first is that we should just sell the building and build somewhere else, and we can save a lot of money. You looked at that option, and can you tell us why that was rejected?
I can tell you the cost part of it, that this is, this project at the $195 million is well within the range and probably the low-cost alternative. The more important question, which is the policy one, is something that you, as the appropriate body, have made, that a building which is on the historic landmark needs to be preserved. I concur with that, but that is not a decision we have made. The council has made it. The responsibility that Fred and his team have and that the advisory committee will help with is, how do we execute that within the schedule and within the budget?
But I think it's important, what you just said about the low-cost option, because it may actually be counterintuitive when people are looking at a big number and thinking about, you know, what our needs are. But we looked at selling the building, demolishing it, rebuilding onsite or offsite, and I believe you concluded in all those scenarios that it would be more expensive. Am I right?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay. So the other question I had has to do with the $195 million figure. And how confident can we be if we structure this a certain way that no matter what happens, we come in at or under $195 million? How realistic is that?
Absolute confidence that we will. There is a fact which impacts any project, public or private, that the very best time to set the budget is in the last week before completion of the project. We will know more. We will always know more. We can do a better job of setting the budget. The hardest thing to do, but the most important, is to set it very early and to make all decisions consistent with that. I think we explained to many of you things like the West Side Light Rail project. For a series of appropriate reasons, we set the budget for that project far too early, far too early. Everybody told us that it was far too early. There were too many unknowns, and the decision was, this project will never proceed without the budget being fixed. We will never receive the federal appropriation. We set the budget, we set the schedule, and they never varied.
That's important to remember. You know, Mr. Walsh has had a private sector construction career, but he's also led Trimest. And those of us who've worked in transit world are actually accustomed to setting the budget and sticking to it and actually having a federal overseer in the form of the Federal Transit Administration that is completely intolerant of budget overruns. And the public sector has perhaps an undeserved reputation for cost overruns. You know, we all know about government cost overruns. They have them at the federal level all the time. Transit projects don't. As a general rule, transit projects don't, and they especially don't here. And Tom's part of that success story. So that's, in effect, we're importing that approach to this project of setting the budget early and making all expectations consistent with that and making choices consistent with that because we'll make a lot of them. David?
Thank you. So we had a work session on how we're going to pay for this, but maybe not everybody was watching that work session. Could you, for those watching at home who are wondering, where is the city suddenly finding $195 million from? How are we going to pay for this?
All right, we'll make some comments, but Ken Rust is going to succeed us up here, and he could talk in more detail. So let me let him do that. But the easy answer is there's a policy that the city puts in a 5% equity contribution if we bond for the project, which we intend to do. And we've talked in terms of 20-year bonds that would then be paid off in lease rates.
Basically taking out a mortgage in part.
Yes.
Thank you. And then my second concern is about the services that are on the ground floor, particularly the two restaurants and the childcare center. Obviously, they would benefit if we can do the keeping people onsite as much as possible. What provisions are we thinking about making for those services?
Two answers to that. On the childcare, we found an alternative site that is about four blocks away that we want to invest in and make available, which I think is very convenient, not only for City of Portland, well, Portland Building and City Hall employees, but also it's closer to the 1900 Building. So it'd be more accessible and it's a little larger. So we plan to do that. In terms of the vendors, you may hear from some of them today, there's no legal obligation for us to do anything, but I think from a moral end, there's probably some relocation that we could help with. But also in terms of the design, we want to be sensitive to how long they can stay. If we have a number of employees in the building, it could be that there will be viable concerns for a while. If we have to empty the building, then obviously they need to go elsewhere. But I think the council probably has a decision on that, that we have talked to them, but that's not a decision that we can make in terms of financial commitment.
I just note for myself that I'm sometimes totally dependent on those food services for, you know, to provide a quick lunch. So if we can help them out, I would appreciate it.
I pass through every morning for coffee, so.
Mr. Saltzman?
So, you know, I appreciate very much the philosophy we're bringing here of it's got to be $195 million and that's it. But, you know, I'm still skeptical, as I said at our work session. I think, you know, the council has a hard time saying no, and I can see scenarios where we will be approached about things from our employees, about things they really want, maybe when it's at the 90% level. So tell me, who does the owner's representative report to?
Well, I think, without answering that one in particular, actually, this idea sort of keys off your comment, that if you have difficulty saying no, my sense is if you say to us, to OMF, or to me, get this done within 195, it gives me the ability to say no. And it's not that you don't have other opportunities to look at it, but I would take this very seriously and deal with the advisory committee on managing this within those parameters. And if anything, I think we're going to come in lower because I think that if we don't have to move all the employees out, we can do that. It's not that, when you have other opportunities to look at this, you couldn't say, we know we told you 195, but we want to do this something extra, but I'm not going to do that. So you're going to find us managed within 195.
And there's, I assume there's a contingency of 10% on that 195?
No, no. The actual construction project out of the 175 was 79 million. And then the contingencies, the 1% s, 2% s, other things add up. So yeah, we do have a contingency built in.
And then I guess I was, you know, reading the CBO write-up this morning, and it's here in the resolution, too. There's a, you know, an $11 million cost associated with moving the data center, which isn't part of the budget? I guess that seems like a lot of money.
It does seem like a lot of money. I have not seen the data center number because I didn't think we had developed that yet. I thought we're still looking at alternatives.
I thought I read that in the CBO write-up, but...
Well, I hadn't seen that write-up. But there is a data center issue that we have to talk about separately. I'm not trying to make that part of today's discussion, but I'd be happy to bring that back anytime.
Okay. I mean, it seemed, like I said, if that number was right, if I recalled that correctly, that's a big number, and I just have a hard time understanding how it could cost that much.
Okay. Well, I think it requires some discussion. I know people are looking at it, but at this stage, people are looking at alternatives. And regardless of the project, I think we need to change the data center, and we have to worry about disaster recovery. But I have that on a separate page.
I mean, no doubt about it, it's important, the data center. It's just, it's the sticker shock of $11 million. It's very, it reminds me of when we were discussing the Sustainability Center, and the cost to move Bureau of Planning Sustainability across the street was estimated to be $4 million. I could never get my arms around, how could it possibly cost $4 million to move a bureau across the street? So I'm having that same sort of, you know, shock about that figure.
We will definitely get back to you, but probably get back to the whole council to discuss that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Fish?
Fred, you mentioned the value of having a government center and having basic functions of government located in a geographically proximate area. So if we're going to make this kind of investment, I think it really is important that we make at the same time a commitment to maximizing our existing space. And I've heard of sort of conversations that are in the ether about possibly investing in new office space in other parts of the city. And frankly, as, while I can understand that that is superficially attractive, if we're going to make this kind of investment and we're looking at our portfolio that's accessible to this building, I hope our focus is taking full advantage of our existing space long before we consider any new space.
All right, no doubt. And we can make this a much more efficient building, and with technology, there are opportunities to have different configurations, and we still haven't exhausted the work in other spaces. People say work at home, but there are lots of different options there. So we want to use a space, interestingly, I'm not smart enough to say what a 50% increase in population in the Portland area does over the next 15 years, but it's not going to lead to fewer employees. And I think we just have to look at all of that. But yes, we will make the best use.
And the other thing, I just want to piggyback off of a question that Commissioner Fritz asked. So you explained to us how this would be financed with a bond financing and an equity contribution. So what's the general fund contribution and what's the contribution from all the users?
Let's let Ken address that because when he talks about equalizing rates, he can do that. And it really depends on who's in the building. And there's a small thing about getting Multnomah County off the 14th and 15th floors and moving BES in that I think we'll accomplish. But once, you can't see exactly the contributions until you know who the occupants are. And we're close to that, but Ken knows more than the rest of us right now.
Do you have questions?
Yes, a couple. First, I just wanted to say for record that I personally was not particularly invested in maintaining this building because of its historic building. My interest is in what's the most cost-effective and rational thing to do regardless of the historic status. So I was persuaded by the case that you've... So I was persuaded by the case that you've made in the materials, that actually this is the most cost-effective option. I think that a lot of people feel intuitively that it must be a lot cheaper to build a building somewhere else in the city. You reach a different conclusion. I think it would be helpful if you walk through that a little bit.
We actually have a handout that maybe all of you have. I don't have it with me at the moment. Are you looking to walk through that today, or?
I'd like, actually, just sort of for the audience, I mean, I have gone through the handout, but I think it would be useful for the audience, you know, both here and on TV, to hear a brief summary of it.
A brief summary, and if you want more, there are people in the audience who can do that. We looked at land prices in four or five different areas. We found an area in the southeast where land prices actually were more attractive, but when you compared the cost of construction, it's lots less expensive to use the existing shell, because you're not looking for new concrete and steel as opposed to all-new on the outlined areas. And when you looked at all the costs together, it came out that this was the lowest-cost alternative. It would be more of a dilemma if it were not. And then you get into the historic building, because I think that's a real problem as well. If we were to leave it empty or move out or try to destroy it, I think that's a problem. So I'm happy that the numbers came out that way. But we did look at all the alternatives, and there is, there is a five-page paper with that, and this was the best option. The advisory committee has reviewed all that.
Another point I wanted to raise is that in terms of seismic strengthening of the building, what the $195 million reflects is a package that includes strengthening the building to current code standards, which means basically life safety.
That's correct.
With the building a lot fall down on the people in it or people outside.
That's correct.
That is different, of course, from being able to immediately reoccupy the building after an earthquake and have people work on it. And I realize there probably isn't going to be much appetite to talk about a higher cost for reconstructing this building, but I would like to see if at some point in the next, you know, several months, we can take a look at what would it cost in order to have a building we can reoccupy immediately, and then we can think about whether it's worth it.
We had a very preliminary discussion earlier this week specifically on that subject, and from the minimal standard, my term minimal standard, that is currently envisioned to a upgrade, which is much closer to what you're suggesting, is a relatively modest cost. Needs absolutely to be considered. I was persuaded, listening to the structural engineers, that $195 million total budget, why wouldn't we make that a highest of priority? So no decision made, yes, but it's not off the charts.
And you will get a look at this.
Thank you very much.
I think that's a really important point, Commissioner. I was under the impression that it would be still standing after the big one, so I'm definitely interested in looking, how much would it cost?
There'll be more. There are gradations, and the idea that it'd be standing after some repairs, people could re-enter. Our current level is lower than that. There's a higher standard that Commissioner Novick is referring to. We will lay that out for you. That's part of the analysis.
We're spending close to $200 million, it would seem like, if it's a relatively modest increase, that that would be well worth the investment.
And it will occur within the 195.
There you go.
I mean, those are, those are the classic kinds of things that arise. Gee, it is only one or two or three million, wouldn't we increase the budget? The answer is no, thank you, we will not increase the budget. But there are other things that we might have liked that are not as important, and they will not be provided in the building.
Okay, for this one? I mean, I want to do all three, and then.
Yes, please.
Will be available.
Let's go through the whole presentation and the others that you have queued up to speak as well.
Okay. So from here, we go to Ken Rust and Cindy Nickel from the Port on equalizing rates, and then Andre Ba will be up here with me talking about community enhancements, community benefits.
Great, thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, Mayor Hales. Members of the City Council, for the record, my name is Ken Rust. I'm the chief administrative officer, not, was that once? Chief financial officer and director of the Bureau of Revenue and Financial Services. The resolution before you today directs OMF to develop lease rental rates for city-owned or leased office space in the central business district in a manner that equalizes those rates charged to bureau tenants regardless of their location. As we discussed in our August work session, we believe that this approach will best achieve the following goals and objectives. First, we think it best conforms to the council's direction with regard to our space, that our goal is to have bureaus in city-owned space. If we're not in city-owned space, that we would be leasing historic buildings first. And also, I think, allows us over time, as we make this building more efficient in the use of space, to have the potential to bring bureaus that are outside in leased space into our own city-owned space. We also believe it provides the best opportunity for cost certainty and predictability to city bureaus and tenants, both in the short run and in the longer run. It helps to ensure a consistent level of service that is provided by city bureaus, regardless of which building they're in or what leased space they might be in. And then, over the long term, our analysis has showed us that the least-cost option for us is to own our own space and to have city bureaus in it. And an equalized rate approach that helps us bring bureaus into our own space is one that helps achieve that objective. So those are the reasons why we're proposing this. This is not a new concept, it's been discussed and thought about in years past. We think now is the right time to proceed with it. With me this morning is Cindy Nickel, who is the chief financial officer for the Port of Portland and is also a member of our Portland Building Advisory Committee. I'd like to have Cindy share with you her experience in implementing and managing an equalized rate structure for the port's facilities.
Great, thanks very much. I've been able to work at, on staff at airports, including those at Boston, San Francisco, and Portland, for more than three decades. And I just wanted to speak to the value of equalized terminal rents that we've seen in the airport industry that has parallels to the equalized space, office space rents that are proposed in the resolution here. We found that if occupants pay the same rates, then locational decisions can be made without concern about paying more or less rent relative to others, and can instead reflect important factors such as being located near entities which with, with which the occupants need to frequently partner, also having access to infrastructure and services that they need and they're doing their daily business. Also, rent equalization provides more stable, predictable costs for tenants. There are also benefits to those of us who are administering the facilities. Quite honestly, it helps us to, we can pool the costs, we can manage our debt as an overall portfolio, which provides economies of scale. We spend less time tracking costs by specific area, and as a portfolio, we can manage the different, and we don't have to calculate many different rates. We can also more quickly execute occupant moves and more flexibly meet their space needs. Thought I'd, you'd find it interesting to hear about a couple of airports. So here at PDX, we currently do have equalized rents, which we've had for about five years, actually 10 years. But in the 1990s, PDX had different rates for nine different parts of the terminal, dating as far back as 1956. So we had odd situations where an airline at one gate was paying $5 more per square foot than an airline in the very next gate, which, without very different space. The other thing, which you may have heard about, equalized rents has made it very easy for us within a few months to negotiate with the airlines a move. So we're going to be moving Alaska and Horizon from the south up to the north and moving United down, and we're going to be able to add some gates on the north for Alaska and Horizon. Those of you who fly out of, on Horizon know the pain of that little concourse. But because we've had renovation of our space over time, the quality of the space that we offer airlines is substantially similar, and the airlines have supported changing those equalized rents. In Boston, by contrast, it took several years to negotiate moving one airline. In San Francisco, they do have equalized domestic terminal rates, and they actually reallocate the space every single year based on the evolving needs of the airlines. I wanted to conclude by mentioning an important legal challenge regarding equalized terminal rates that came up in the mid-'90s in Miami. The airport wanted to reconfigure space for American Airlines, and the other airlines challenged that. Five carriers challenged that. The case went all the way up to the U.S. Supreme Court of Appeals in Washington, D.C., which ruled that the equalized rates are reasonable, saying comparability of facilities must be assessed over time, because the equalization method relies on assumptions that different facilities are renovated at different times, and that any point in time, some airlines will be using older facilities than others, but over that time, every other airline will obtain new facilities. In other words, the equalization methodology entails measuring comparability over time. Each airline subsidizes construction of new facilities for the others, but then benefits when new facilities are constructed for its own use. I hope that's helpful, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, please. Ken, thank you for the briefings we've received on this, and I'm persuaded philosophically that the, the goals and values you outlined are important behind equalization. And I'm particularly, over time, have been concerned about the incentives that were in our, built into our system for people to opt out of using city-owned property, which runs counter to council directives and policy. But I suppose a critic of this approach is going to say that in the short term, there are winners and losers because of the transition to an equalized rate. That is, some people may pay a little more, some people pay a little less. So what do you say to critics who, who point to that as the flaw in this approach?
Well, at any point in time, you take a snapshot, there's that potential that someone could see themselves as a winner or loser. That was certainly the case when we built the 1900 Building. That was the most expensive building for a while, and now it might become less expensive. The Portland Building, when the debt service rolled off, is a very inexpensive building right now, and now it's going to become a very expensive building if we go through the renovations. So at any point in time, that argument can be used. I think what has to happen is that you have to look over a longer timeframe. And the city is a long-term entity that basically looks at a perpetual need for its building ownership and management. And when you look at it and think about it in that context, then that point in time, you know, comparison becomes less meaningful, and you get into the, I think, the more correct analysis, when you look at us as a landlord, we have to look at the right policy for the long term, because we're going to be here for the long term.
On that topic, I have an amendment, which my staff has discussed with Mr. Miller, and I hope we'll have support. The issue is precisely that, of what point in time do you pick? It seems to me that the sooner we start this, the better, because, for instance, the Bureau of Development Services and the Bureau of Planning Sustainability are, in the 1900 Building, currently paying higher costs, and then boom, as soon as they were figuring that they would be paying lower costs, if we set it in 2020, they will then be paying more to renovate the Portland Building. So my amendment is to change the last, be it further resolved, and to have it start in 2017, 18, rather than 2021.
This is in 1063.
This is in 1063, correct.
Sorry, where is that?
The last line of Resolution 1063, 2018, 19?
17, 18. So not starting it next year, because that would be too difficult to manage, but that's starting as soon as possible, so that BDS and planning get somewhat of a break.
Okay. Commissioner Fritz moves that amendment. I'll second it, and we can discuss it.
Yeah, I'm puzzled. How does that help BDS and planning in adjusting to the rate realities?
They're currently paying higher rates because they're paying off the mortgage for the 1900 Building. The mortgage for that will be done in 2020, so they were looking forward to having much lower rates thereafter. So if we equalize starting now, their rates for the next two, for the two years, 18, 19, 20, would be a little lower, so that it would give them a little bit of relief.
So I guess I don't understand this, because the resolve that you're modifying says, develop a schedule to achieve, it doesn't say implement a change.
It's to develop it no later than, do the change no later than 17, 18, rather than no later than 2021.
Is that, that's not how I read this. It says, develop a schedule to achieve equalized rates. It doesn't specifically say that you implement any change in rates. I think that's what it means, but Ken, why don't you?
Yeah, I think what the intent was, is that, and the way we crafted the language is that we want to be able to move towards the equalized rate structure. We want to do it in a planned, orderly manner, probably cotermis with the actual repopulation of the Portland Building, and that make kind of a logical end date, which is the fiscal year 2021. So the question in our mind is, we didn't want to necessarily say, well, we're going to wait till 2021 to do it. Maybe we want to start ramping up to that and have a transition into those blended rates. We also need to integrate that rate change plan into the, two things. One, the overall, the overall funding plan for the Portland Building itself in terms of the construction financing, and then also integrate that with, with the CBO in terms of impacts on the general fund and other bureaus. So the way we had crafted the language is to provide us some flexibility that, that gave us options in terms of how we would do that, bring them back then in the budget process for adoption. The proposal or the amendment by Commissioner Fritz would shorten that, if you will, and have it implemented in 17, 18. There are, we certainly can do that. That may have some other consequences that we haven't worked through yet, so I can't tell you what that might be. Would have to work with the budget office to be able to document that.
What would we be implementing in, under the amendment? Would we be changing people's rates, or would we be determining a schedule for a phase in?
If I understand the amendment, and perhaps Commissioner Fritz can, if I don't capture it, she can certainly explain it. It's my understanding of what the intent is, is that we would have a schedule of equalized rates that would be actually implemented in fiscal year 4, 2017, 18. Not just the development of that schedule, but the actual implementation as well, which would probably be cotermis with the budget process or something like that. I don't know what Commissioner.
That's correct. And my understanding of the be it resolved was that we were going to start the rate equalization in 2021. What I'm suggesting is that we started in 17, 18.
So I, the only problem I have with the amendment, Mayor, and the sponsor, is, sitting here, I don't know what impact it has on any bureau or any budget. And is this issue have to be decided as part of this resolution, or is this something where we could task the CFO to tell us what the implication of this would be and come back to us?
It's, they're tasked with developing a schedule, right? So as that schedule would have budget implications, it comes back to us at least in the form of budget, but maybe otherwise. Help me with that. In other words, the direction in this, it is a resolution, not an ordinance. It says, the council wants you to do this, and this means go develop a rate schedule that achieves equalization. What's the, what are the, what are the gates by which the effects of that decision comes back, come back to council?
And perhaps we could ask Andrew Scott from the City Budget Office to come up and give his input.
So Andrew, come on up and help, let's hear it from both sides of the budget equation here, so.
So I could start, or Andrew could start, and we'll correct each other. I'm not sure.
Fred will be the tiebreaker if there's a disagreement.
It would seem that if I understand, and it's also what we'd be doing.
Former CIO.
What we, what we would be doing is developing a schedule of equalized rates for the buildings in the leased spaces that we've been discussing. We would calculate what those impacts would be for fiscal year 2017, 18, and that would be brought back for council adoption. And it'd be probably part of a budget process, there'll probably be budgetary impacts. I'll let Andrew then talk more specifically about how that might work out.
Yeah, I think that's right. We've been working closely with Ken and his team on this rate, rent equalization. I think the question, really, just from a timing perspective, is, does the schedule contemplate implementation in 17, 18, or is it contemplating implementation as late as 2021? I think the way it's written now, it's as late as 2021. My understanding is this would, this would move it forward and say, look, the schedule says we're going to implement it then. From a process standpoint, I, council could do it separately, but probably would do it as part of a budget process because of all the moving pieces. When that schedule was worked out and we had looked through all the implications, we would come back with, with current appropriation level, target adjustments potentially for general fund bureaus, and then other bureaus would be able to adjust to that, and it would be through a budget process.
What's, so go ahead. I just, so I just, my questions are intended to understand the amendment, which I have not seen before. So what's the difference in terms of our budget process of taking this up in 2017 versus 2020? Because what we're having, in any event, we're getting a recommendation, which we will then review and take action on through our budget process, so it is, it is inherently at our discretion. What's the difference in terms of moving that up a couple of years?
I think as Ken mentioned, at any, at any point in time, there, there's a snapshot of what those costs would be. I think in 15, 16, City Hall debt rolls off later, a few years later, the 1900 Building debt rolls off. So at any point when you implement this, rent, some bureaus' rents will go up, some bureaus' rents will go down as you equalize.
Yeah, let me, let me think out loud a little bit here and maybe reassure us about what we're doing. To state the obvious, just in case it's not, the total cost of renting office space for city bureaus is not changed by this, right? One way or another, we're paying all the rent we're paying to all the landlords that receive it, whether it's ourselves or someone else. What this resolution deals with is whether that rent is equal across the bureaus or not. If we change from the current environment, in which there are winners and losers, some people are momentarily paying less rent, others are momentarily paying more, but again, the bottom line's the same, it's all us. If we change that sooner, the council will have options about changing the budgets of the relevant bureaus who win or lose in the new calculation. So there could be a Cal target adjustment for a budget, for a bureau, based on the fact that, oh, you used to pay $10,000 a year in rent, now you're paying $20,000 a year. So I'm untroubled by starting sooner, because we still have the option to make adjustments. So I'm untroubled by starting sooner, because we still have the option to make adjustments and to give bureaus consideration for the fact that their costs have gone up and gone down against other bureaus. But it would be, I think, a good idea, that's why I seconded Commissioner Fritz's amendment, I think it's a friendly amendment, say, "Go ahead and start now, moving towards equalization." If you need a couple of years to make a transition, you'll have them. If, if, if we can get there more quickly, great, but one way or another, let's get out of an environment in which bureaus, from time to time, have an incentive to move out of the Portland building, and we don't want that anymore.
All right, so then, then just, and I'm sorry that I'm asking basic questions, because I still don't understand the difference. So if I don't understand the difference, I want to make sure I don't wake up tomorrow saying, "Oh, my God, I didn't see the obvious." So you originally recommended that we develop a schedule by no later than 2021. Why did you pick that date?
A couple of reasons, Commissioner. First, it's consistent with when we would be back in the Portland building, seemed like a natural place to start it at that point in time, when full debt service is coming online for that building. Because what's going to happen between now and then is there's a fair amount of things happening to the cost pool, if you will. We have, as Andrew mentioned, debt service for City Hall falling away, followed by debt service for the 1900 building falling away. So those cost pools going down, and all of a sudden, debt service coming back up and filling, filling that up with the Portland building. So even if we equalized it sooner, you're going to have some movement around the rate schedule that's going to create some, some of the problems we're trying to avoid, which is some of the instability, which we think if we take that point in time, ramping up or starting it at when the cost pool is going to become more stable, we can avoid some of that. And those are, those are technical issues. I'm sure that we can work through those with the Budget Office and with bureaus. But the reason why 2021 or that timeframe was to have us work through all of that noise, if you will, in the cost pool and provide, I think, a little bit more stable platform to start with. That was really the logic behind it.
So the mayor views this amendment as a friendly amendment, so what's the, what's the advantage of moving it up three years?
I think the advantage is, one, we get through this process more quickly, we get people kind of accustomed to this is the way we're going to manage our properties. We have that piece of work behind us, and we have the methodology set up to do it. We may, I think the trade-off is, is that there'll be maybe a slightly noisier period as we adjust, as the cost pool adjusts to changes in that cost pool, but those are things that we can work out.
I note that the language currently says, "Achieve equalized office space rates no later than FY 2021," so we could do it earlier. I think that this is overall a good policy, and generally I would say that a good policy should be adopted as soon as possible. I do have a parochial concern about PIBOT, because I think that, I mean, PIBOT is going to see its rents go up regardless, and PIBOT, I think, is in a different position than some of the bureaus, because it is a general fund bureau, so we can't, it doesn't just address issues through a Cal target adjustment. It can't do cost recovery, I mean, it doesn't do cost, rely on cost recovery permit fees like BDS, and it doesn't have rates that it can raise, like DES and water. So although I accept the fact that PIBOT's rents are going to go up at some point, I'm reluctant to sign off on sort of immediate implementation without having a better understanding about how that will affect my bureau.
Okay. So let's take a vote on accepting the amendment, and then we can proceed, I think, unless there are other questions about the amendment.
Well, I guess, to Steve's point, Mayor, we don't know what the implication is to the budget of this. And there is no actual reason why it has to be taken up today. And it seems to me that, while I'm inclined to support it, and you view it as a friendly amendment, I would actually love to have an analysis before I did so, so I understood with my eyes open what this means. And if Commissioner Novick has the same concern, I think we should just hold the amendment. If we're, if you're asking us to adopt a resolution today, I think we should go ahead, hold the amendment, so we get an analysis and bring it back as a freestanding amendment.
That's one of the options, but Commissioner Fritz, why would you, what would you, how would you like to proceed?
If the policy of equalization is the fairest thing to do, surely we should do it as soon as possible, as Commissioner Novick said. And yes, there will be winners and losers, but there will be clear losers if we wait until 2021, when, as I said, the 1900 building comes, becomes less expensive. So if we're going to make, if we're going to ask the occupants of the 1900 building to pay more for the Portland building renovation, it seems the least we could do is to help them out a little bit with their mortgage right now.
So, to be clear, I think the drift of the resolution, you've persuaded me as to the merits of the resolution, but simply restating the merits doesn't get me any closer to understanding what the financial implication is. And I think if, since Commissioner Novick is also in the dark about the financial implication, I'd like to see the analysis of what it is before I cast my vote. And it doesn't impact the timeline that we're under, because we're talking about an event two years out anyway.
So we, we can proceed to vote on the amendment if we'd like, because it doesn't sound like you want to withdraw it, Commissioner Fritz. I'm persuaded that we, we have the option of coming to this sooner, even if we adopt it with the current numbers in it.
So Mayor, let me just make an observation. This is probably the hundredth time we've gotten together to talk about the building. I'm being facetious. We have had extensive financial assessments, we've had work sessions, we've had discussions. An amendment is on the table that three of your colleagues have never seen before, that may or may not have a fiscal impact, and that a couple of us, and Steve is probably the smartest member of the council, still don't know how it, how it actually works. Now, you can take that to a vote, in which case you're forcing the issue. Or you can simply set it over for a couple of weeks, so we can understand what its implication is, and then we can do it in the collegial way. I don't know why we would even...
Perhaps you didn't hear me. I said, "I am persuaded that we should leave it like it is." But, so I could withdraw my second. But Commissioner Fritz has put an amendment on the table, and I gave her the courtesy of seconding it, so she can withdraw it, or we can vote it down, but...
And with all due respect, I did raise this issue at the work session as a concern, and was looking, have been looking into, how could we address that?
Good concern.
So I, there's no particular reason why we have to vote on, at all, on this resolution today, so I would defer to the request to hold it, hold this particular resolution over for a couple of weeks.
Any reason that we should act on this particular resolution today? My preference would be that we act on it in its current form and be prepared to return to the schedule at some future time after people have seen the numbers.
Well, then we have to craft another resolution, which...
You just have to tell them to adopt a different schedule. It says, "No later than."
I think we need to give certainty to the City Budget Office and others as to what schedule they're supposed to be looking out for over the next several years.
Okay. So how would you like to proceed?
I'd like to not vote on the resolution at all today.
I'm not, I'm not persuaded that we shouldn't go ahead and approve it, and we can always revise it later. So I'm going to withdraw my second. And unless there's another second for your motion, then your motion. Guys, for lack of a second, then we'll take testimony on and consider adopting the resolution as it is before us. Again, as I said, Commissioner Fritz, I think you're right that we should try to do this sooner than later. I'd like our financial experts and resource folks to give us all those numbers, so that we see, if we're in a three-year schedule of equalization, here's what happens to each bureau's budget, and we'll know when we think the pain threshold is bearable, in terms of whatever winners and losers calculations there are among bureaus. Again, for everyone else who's wondering why we're spending so much time on this, the bottom line is still the same. The city of Portland will pay the same number of dollars in rent each of these years that it would have paid anyway, it's just a question of which bureau's budget it comes out of. So I guess I'd like to set them on at least this relatively benign schedule of saying, "Get this done by 2021 at the latest," and we might be able to roll it up sooner.
And so Mayor, just to be clear, Commissioner Fritz makes a compelling argument for moving it up, and I'm likely to support her. I think I have bureaus that are, in the short term, going to be paying more, and I still support her. And what I'm interested in is understanding from the Budget Office and from the CFO what the implication is of moving that date forward. And I leave it to your good analysis. I think a memo of no more than two pages, you could probably have it to us this afternoon, and I just want to understand the impact.
And just for the record, this was raised in the Chief of Staff's meeting yesterday, so it's not a new issue for your staff.
Okay. Other questions or discussions about this resolution? And then let's move to the third, please, thank you. And then we'll take testimony on the whole package. Okay, this will be quick, and Andre has about five minutes, and I want to, I want to tee it up. This, in one sense, should be the easiest of the resolutions, and it won't be. But it has to do with, you started off as a resolution for the councils, a community benefits agreement that was implemented with a couple of water projects, and then there's been a community benefits plan with the parks project or two. I mean, that's been an idea. And in my view, and listening to the parties, it has taken lots of time and money to administer that, to implement it. What this is intended to do is to say, "Let's agree," and the resolution includes a 1% commitment of the hard construction costs to community enhancements, things like workforce training, technical assistance, women in trades, and so on. I'm saying, "Let's say we agree with all that, and that you direct us to do 1% of the hard construction costs, which may be about $1 million, and, and ask us, direct us, to develop a process to capture the best of all that we have learned, in terms of those community benefits agreements, plans, work with the impacted parties, and come back to you with a recommendation on how that, those funds should be allocated." So I would like to think that there wouldn't be a lot of argument about that. It may be that some people are invested in the previous processes, but I know on the first water project, like, a half percent was given to the contractor, and then lots of time and committees, and the project took eight months or so to get signatures of all the signatories. And I would say that may be in the 100% administrative costs to allocate the funds. When we do children's levy, we say, "Let's keep it within five." I think we can, we can do the same thing, reach the same objective with lots less administrative cost, if you just direct us to do that, and then we come back with a proposal. That's what this would do. Andre, I want to let you speak, because you've had some experience and perspective.
So Andre Baugh, I'm a member of the steering committee, and I would say, first, because we're talking about community enhancements, community benefits, this is really a iconic Portland project. It is really Portland-centric, and because of that, we're looking to those community enhancements and benefits and objectives be a broader stakeholder group than the traditional contractors and workforce. When you look at the comprehensive plan, these are community groups that traditionally are not involved in contracting, but want to be involved in their community in building that, those projects. So it's, how do we get a broader community, such as the parks is used as an example, to target certain communities to ensure that they're involved in parks projects? Looking at the traditional DMWESB workforce you're talking about, including non-traditional participants in making decisions about community goals, benefits, and objectives. And really, the resolution is to give us an opportunity to create that, that brings those benefits back to the community and goals, that are not only to the traditional DMWESB, but also, and workforce, women and minorities, but also to Portland residents in the communities that really need those benefits. And so it's, it's an opportunity to look at best practices from all the bureaus, but also around the state and around, in different cities, and say, "How can we do this to really bring home some benefits to these communities and to the city of Portland in a transparent, accountable, achievable manner that works well with traditional Portland contracting?"
Okay. Thank you. Yes, please.
Fred, we're about to lose Andre.
I've got about two or three minutes, so if you're quick.
You give us 40 hours a week anyway, Andre, at least we can do is let you make a living on the side. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
So Fred, a prior council adopted a, was it a resolution or an ordinance, on a community benefits agreement? We adopted something, and we were...
I think it was a resolution.
And we were encouraged, the city, the council encouraged bureaus to look at this model.
Correct.
And at some point, it contemplated that we would come back to council and do a review, comprehensive review by procurement of, how's it, how's it working? When do we get that review?
It's sometime next calendar year. It's not done yet, and it's one of the reasons, we didn't want to wait until that. We wanted to make the commitment and start the process going. And Christine has already said, she is aimed at exceeding the WBE, MBE goals. That's not the issue, but it's these other projects.
So you also, in your opening statement, said that we've, we have some examples of customizing that approach. Parks customized it, there's been some flexible approaches. What's the critical difference between the resolution in front of us and the approach that you're recommending, and the CBA approach that the council has embraced?
I think the critical difference is, we're trying to get a bigger tent. The CBA was very focused on looking at DMWESB firms and workforce. We're trying to bring in a broader tent of participants. The housing coalitions have said, "How do we participate in a construction project?" So they have residents that have low income, that want to work, that have construction experience, or want to get construction experience. So how do we create a sustainable, long-term process to get Portland residents into the construction industry, which benefits Portland? And how do we do that on a project? The CBA has some good experience around doing that, but some of the groups are not included in that, and we're trying to get a bigger tent. Some are, some aren't, and we're just looking, how do we get this bigger tent? How do we take some of those best practices and put them all in one place for this project? So it, it's not saying that that, those experiences are, if you will, bad experiences, or what Parks is doing has not worked. We just don't know, but we're going to take what we think is working and look at some other things and put them all in one place.
And Andre, is, the principle that the council articulated a few years ago was to expand opportunity in our community.
Yep.
And it was to address some historical wrongs and barriers. Does the approach that, that is reflected in 1060, 1064, is that consistent with the approach, with the values that the council articulated when we adopted the CBA approach?
It's consistent with that approach, but it is also consistent with what the residents and citizens of Portland are saying, that they want to be involved, those historic communities want to be involved, not only from a contracting, but from a workforce standpoint. And they want to receive those wages that come out of projects such as this. So yes, it's very consistent with the goals, and it really is saying, taking those goals in front of us, plus the community goals. And now how do we do that? And what are the methodologies? What are the objectives? And how do we report back to you in an accountable, transparent way?
So we do need to release Andre from captivity here and let him get back to his day job. Any other questions for our, our super volunteer before, before he does go, actually?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Andre. We appreciate you very much. Okay, any other questions for Fred and our, and our support team here? Okay. So I'd make one comment. We have a great advisory committee, and you've seen some of that. And I, I'm working, I think, with the best team I've been around, either public or private sector, to get something done. So with these resolutions, you're going to see some activity, and it's going to be direct, and you'll hear back at various times, but I think it's very positive for the city. Thank you, Fred. Thanks very much. Okay, I think we're ready to move to public testimony. I don't believe we have any invited testimony beyond the folks we've already heard from, so let's open it up, please. And obviously, folks, if you're here to speak on this package of amendments, or, sorry, package of resolutions, feel free to speak about any one of the three or all three as you come up.
Okay, we have a total of 13 people signed up. The first three, please come on up, are John O., Jim Wittenberg, and Bruce M. Hall. And they'll be followed by Chang Sim, James Posey, and Crystal Alinsky.
Okay, come on up, please.
Right now, we need John O., Jim Wittenberg, and Bruce Hall. Come on up. Go ahead and go with Chang Sim. I think we need a third one, if Mr. Sims is here.
Go ahead, Jim, I think you're ready to start.
I just want to catch my breath for a minute.
Okay, sure. All right. I'm sorry, go ahead, John, please. Yes. Just give us your name.
Stand or sit?
No, sit, and just give us your name and proceed. Thank you.
My name is Bruce Hall. I am a 90-year-old retired attorney, so I'm earthy all around. I came here to support something which I did not see up on your reader board, I haven't heard from anybody here today. a, a topic which is, I designated as Free Portlandia, when I did a soon business name like that some years ago. Then I continued my practice, shamefully. I finally got around to this again. Today, here with all this talk that is going on about the Portland building, rural Portlandia is not mentioned as usual. My understanding of Portlandia's attachment is some kind of cement block on the second floor that helps spread and support her weight, but I don't know that, I've never seen any plans. However, I have been trying to figure out how to get citizen involvement, as the last speaker was talking about, in this process. I've gone to the Oregonian, because the Oregonian, for a long time, has more closely followed Portlandia than any other paper has. And the Oregonian really came to the point where they were saying, well, we've got to either raise or fix up Portland, fix up the building. And I sort of from this today gather that fixing up the building is the way where it's going to go, it's not going to be raised. At the time I got excited about it, it possibly existed that the building would be raised. Very poignantly, what would happen to Portlandia? Somehow or another, it's gotten under the radar. Right here now today, I'm simply asking you, I'm going to try, if the city does not do what I suggest, to get going on a, a poll, a citizenry, well-designed poll, to see what the citizens think about moving Portlandia. In my case, my vote is solidly for going to the waterfront and facing on a fairly large podium, so more people on the east side see it, or hear. But in any event, I, that's what I hope the city might do. That's why I'm here today, saying that, would the city consider a poll to bring in the people here, the citizens, of what they would like to see done with Portlandia? She's not going to just disappear from the earth, we've got to do something about that beautiful statue. And as I say, my own particular vote is for the waterfront, for all the reasons that former mayor Bud Clark kind of touched on at the 30th birthday the other day, and that is, he started out by talking about the marine background and how she arrived and so forth, probably from his bird's eye aboard a kayak, but nonetheless, he said it. And it just shows us in our bloodstream, why not do something about Portlandia now, not 2021? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Chang Sim, owner of the 1000 coffee in the Portland building. Thank you, Commissioner Madoff, for thinking about our situation. I'm here to tell our situation, if you guys know about it. Because of all this planning and then talking about this, renovating the building, our business value dropped to zero. We can't sell it, and we've become basically hostages until things could be resolved. So, and obviously, Fred Miller doesn't have the power to help us, unless you guys say go ahead. So, please give him, more power to him to help us. This, this is the only, our only business to generate the income to pay my mortgages and raising my three boys. My 17-year-old, he, he'll be a senior, he's a senior, he'll go to college, and all these things, no future for me. My five-year lease end up February, and then the city will give us like a month to month, which is a death sentence to the small business. So, I don't know if you guys thinking about our situation? It happened to be, you guys helping city kid, I don't know what, what's going on, but there's no talk about helping three small business minority-owned, I don't know what's going on here. So, I want to get some answer from you guys.
Thank, thank you for coming and making sure that we're all aware of your situation. So, obviously, Fred is aware of it, and you, you know, you're a valuable part of our local neighborhood here, and we appreciate you having you there, so thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Yeah, so-
Well, we, we obviously will be back in touch with you as a tenant in the building as this proceeds, and, and work with you as best we can.
Thank you. Then I'll speak one more then.
Please.
You guys are talking about helping people facing the homelessness and apartment situation, apartment rent owners raising 7%, 10%, so they just have, can keep up with those rent high. And you are the part, you are also the renter, and set a good example to those other people. So, instead of wait, they are, we lose our business, which is left to the homeless for us, then we end up in the doorstep of the city hall, then you, then you're going to help us, that that's not the way I want to see, and that that's not the way other people want to see from the city council.
Very good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim?
Mayor and city council, my voice has changed a little bit over the last few years, but I hope you can hear me.
Just give us your name, Jim.
Jim Whittenburg, I'm sorry. I've been before these hearings for 50 years now, almost 50 years. I started with Senator Morrison, and Senator Hatfield, and Senator Hartung here in Oregon, who's died recently, and most of these people are all dead. I guess I'm next. I should, I don't think I'm going to last until this building is built and put up. But I do, I do have a feeling about this, that I learned about this, this hearing on the, from the Portland Tribune on Thursday, October 15th, that you were going to do this. I have tried really, pretty hard, pretty hard for me, to get some information about this from your offices. It's been almost a complete roadblock to get it. I've talked to different people, I've, I've asked them for information, and very few people have offered to help in any way to learn this. We talk almost every night at the, at the, my living arrangement, and I, I don't see this group caring very much what the public thinks. We're going to build this building, and we're going to do it our way, and we'll let you know when we decide what's going to happen. And I think that, this is kind of the same attitude that I, I reached back in, in 1978, when we put the, the property tax amendment on the ballot. Nobody really cared in government about it until it was on the ballot, and it was, it was reducing the, the amount of, of taxes for property. It was up to $35,000 a thousand here in Portland. What I see, I'm not against moving, moving this building, but I care about the people that are in the building, they're going to come, they're going to come down if we have an earthquake in the next, next few years. I think we ought to move them right now, as soon as we can, and then worry about replacing the damn building. You know, buildings are buildings, but people's lives matter, and I think the public employees' lives matter. I think you ought to think about them. I've been trying to get you to think about the people of Portland, not the buildings of Portland first. People first, buildings second. And, and it doesn't seem to register anywhere. I, I've done my level best to get you to do that. I, I've been back from, from the wars for, since I've had the stroke and the heart attacks for three or four years now, but I don't want to die here thinking that my nieces are in this town, and there are eight children who are in this town, and their husbands that are in this town, and my brother that lives up here in the West Hills are all going to be subject to, to whatever you decide here, they ought to be part of the process. They ought to be brought into it. This gentleman is right here. When he says, we're not doing that, Senator Morrison and Senators Hatfield would turn over their grays if they saw how little the public matters to the, to people that are in power today. I know that, because I worked with both of them back in, in the seventies, and it seems, it seems a real problem that, that we, we don't move these people and get them out and take care of their safety first, and worry about putting up a building. We have buildings all over town, it doesn't matter, just build something that's going to stay, something is, not something that's supposed... And the last thing I want to say is, in 1978 Republican, 1968 Republican convention in Miami, your dad was, might have been there, I don't know, because I, I've seen him a couple of times in the Congress when I was there. I went there in 1969, I was there for five years, and I, I worked for a couple Congressmen. But one Senator Everett Dirksen, who was Senate Majority Leader at that time, I remember his statement about government, he says, well, a million here and a million there, and pretty soon we're talking about some real money. Now it's 100 million there and 100 million over here. Now we're not even, I haven't taken, that's real money, that, that's got to be paid for. I don't see why that we're not valuing that. I just, I read this article by Jim Redden, you know, I've known, I've worked with his dad in the, in the, in the state legislature, and I don't, I don't see how, how, this is how we got to learn about this. This is how we got to learn. We should have more advanced one before we start voting on resolutions. I like Mr. Miller, I, I think he's, I think he's a good guy, that's what I say. But we got to be informed a little bit before we start voting on resolutions, that cost 195 million dollars. That's a lot of millions of dollars. I don't know if you guys recognize that, but we got to pay for that. I got to pay, well, I probably don't, I'm retired now, without, but the people that are still working got to pay for that.
Jim, thank you. We did, we did have a public work session back in August, but maybe not everybody knew about it.
I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Okay?
Next three are James Posey, Crystal Ilinski, and Rosa Martinez. And then we'll, they'll be followed by Maurice Roman, Marcela Alcantar, and Michael Bertsch.
Okay, come on up. Go ahead, Crystal, I think you can be on first while everybody else is getting organized Crystal, go ahead. Go ahead, please.
Good morning. My name is Crystal Ilinski, and really glad to be here, able to be here, and I represent I am really struck by, well, it seems like the testimony thus far is struck also by the same images that the team was talking about. The wordage was really strange to me, talking about the benefits and the development of the community and life-threatening situations, and all I could think about the entire time was what we could do with that 195 million for the homeless. We're putting maybe 2 million there, 5 million there for the homeless, oh, a state of emergency, let's put another couple million. The last time I attended one of these meetings that, for some reason, you think that most residents of Portland can make it to, the money went straight into construction of a building that I, it was right in my neighborhood that I've been evicted from and homeless for a year, and it's, the rent there is $3,000 when I saw it on Craigslist. So, that was a bit shocking. I, we keep being told that this is great for us, but I, I, I agree that the residents in this, the residents are the citizens, but we don't know what's going on with this, and there's been a lot of talk for a long time. So, when Tom said, well, Andre was talking about the life-threatening situations, and Tom says that he's never worked with a better team. Now, if this was my team, and the way that they're speaking today, it doesn't sound like it's organized or planned very well. I would get rid of the team if it was mine. We're not ready to make any decisions on this, but I think that my suggestions were pretty simple, and they could be implemented immediately. But I do, I want you to pay attention to the homeless situation, what is really life-threatening with people losing their jobs and their houses, and why would we would put money into this right now? Especially when it's a bit hypocritical with all the shoddy construction that's just everywhere now. Nothing seems like it's permanent. So, because Portlandia has become such an icon, and it was built in order to get us on the map, we all know that, and a lot of tourists, tourists come here and say they want to see Portlandia. Well, I think maybe we could start a social media, what do you call it? Put money into, you know, donate to the reconst, you know, redevelopment of this building and fix it up, and save the lives of the people that work there for the city of Portland. Let's start that campaign right now.
Thank you. Thanks very much. James, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. You all know me as James Posey, and, you know, I have represented many groups, but this morning, I'm representing myself as a citizen, and I'm, my comments are not from any particular group. But when I saw this resolution, I had to come and talk about it a little bit, because I see the red flags. Mr. Mayor, with all due respect to you, sir, this resolution does not, from my perspective, mention the, the commission that you created a month ago, and the city council signed off on it. There's no mention of that in this resolution. There's also no mention of the Office of Equity in the whole process, and, and quite honestly, it's disturbing to me to see these sort of resolutions come to council, and there's no collaboration or no sense of synergy about these organizations centered around equity, working together. To me, that's a, a huge issue, and it talks, it speaks to the leadership of how we get this done. So, I just want to say that from the outset. Secondly is, I've never seen a resolution relative to so many vague concepts and, and expressions. When Tom was up here, go back a long day, he looks younger than he was when he was a trine. But he, when he's talking about brick and mortars, he's talking about clear expectations about cost budgets, et cetera. When you all talk about the equity, then it's not precise, it has no relevance to dollars, there's no economic lens on what the outcomes might be, et cetera, et cetera. How is that? Because brick and mortar is important, but as the gentleman said earlier, people are important, so you really want to get some value for your, for your expenditure of funds relative to trying to deal with this longstanding issue. Then, you know, you got your Office of Budget and Finance proposing this stuff, and really, really, you've got an auditor's report that talks about their inability to implement and execute anything relative to equity and/or minority contracted participation. And, you know, I'm not trying to cast any aspersions, but the facts are the facts. When you fail in something, you don't get rewarded by getting a resolution or any other sort of accommodation for, for not achieving your, your particular goals. So, the structure and participation of this, of this amendment, or this, I mean, not the amendment, but the resolution, is really, it's really a sad commentary on what we're doing around this thing, where it's, it's just, it's just not organized in a way that really makes any sense, and the public sees this, whether you guys know it or not. They know the left hand doesn't appear to know what the right hand is doing. There's no substance in, in, in the outcomes and the ability to produce something that's going to be meaningful for the community. So, I would suggest to you that you go back to the drawing board, this particular resolution should be tabled, and go back and get, like you said, let's see what the CBA is really doing. Let's drill down on the numbers, and let's see how many assault, how many consultants are benefiting from this versus contractors, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Let's get that data so we can make a good decision about any resolution going forward.
Well, thank you. I'll get Fred to respond later to that question or that criticism. The, the call for bids is the first resolution, the third one is probably most relevant to your, to your point, so I'll make sure that he responds later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Posey?
Yes.
I would, I shared your concerns. I'm noting that the resolution, the third one, directs the Office of Management and Finance to come back to council with a recommended proposal, no later than May 1st of next year. So, I, I certainly find your comments very cogent, and I'm sure that the mayor will now direct the commission to be involved in the development of that proposal, and also looking at a broader public participation.
My assumption, they, they would be, but we'll get Fred to come back and just put that on the record.
Yeah, put it on the record, make sure it's a part of the going, on the front end, there's posts in the middle and the back end.
And I particularly appreciate your mention of the Office of Equity and Human Rights, and I, I'm sure that they'll be involved as well. Thank you for pointing those two issues out.
Thanks very much. Okay, next three.
The next group is the Equitable Contracting and Purchasing Commission, Rosa Martinez, Maurice Roman, Marcela Alcantar, and Michael Abertsch.
Come on up. Come on up.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. And so as we're getting set up, let me just provide some background of why we're here. This morning, I'm here as the Chair of the Equitable Contracting and Purchasing Commission.
Tell us who you are, Brian.
With me this morning, I have the Commissioners of the Equitable Contracting and Purchasing Commission. I have four of them with me. I have Michael Birch, who is the Executive Director of the Pacific Northwest Regional Council. That's not right?
I'm a representative.
Okay. Of the Pacific Northwest Regional Council.
You got a promotion and Fred got a demotion.
Thank you, thank you.
We were like, yeah.
Great. We also have Rosa Martinez, owner of PMG Abatement and Demolition Contractor. We also have Maurice Roman, President of O'Neill Electric. And we also have Marcela Alcantar, Alcantar, President of Alcantar and Associates. And if I said that wrong, Marcela, you can correct me. Okay.
He's going to get.
So just some background on the commission. The commission was officially formed by council to advise, to advise the council which city efforts are most directly related to increase in minorities and women on city contracts, increasing and increase in minorities and women in the workforce on city projects. And we've had several commissions, commission meetings, and most of those have been well-attended. Last night, we had State Representative Lou Frederick with us, so there've been some good discussions around issues facing the minority and women contracting. One of the things that, that has been a struggle for us is to try to, to get good data in terms of what are, what are kind of, what are the baseline numbers? Because one of the things in terms of, in order to increase the numbers, we need to know where we're starting from. So we've been trying to develop some baseline numbers. But around that, one of the things that the commission moved to last night is we, they wanted to actually start taking some action. And one of the things that came up was a discussion around the CBA. So today, the, we have a, four Commissioners here. It was the unanimous decision last night to move forward with three recommendations. One is specifically related to the CBA, and the other two are related to the implementation of the CBA. So let me start with the first one. The first one is the deferment of the resolution as it is written. So the, it was the unanimous vote last night to defer the resolution. I'm going to go through all, all three of them, and then I'm going to ask each one of the Commissioners to speak to the specific recommendation. Secondly, they, the commission voted unanimously to, to ask City Council to implement certain audit recommendations regarding the city's contracting processes that the auditor recommended. And then, thirdly, it's around staffing, support staffing of the commission. So those are the three recommendations that the commission is going to make recommendations to City Council. And so with that, we'll let the Commissioner speak.
I'd go first.
So is it on?
Yes, it is.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here, as Brian said, as a Commissioner on the ECPC. And I'm here as a representative to ask you to defer on the Resolution Number Three, directing the Office of Management and Finance to develop a proposal dedicating amount equal to 1% of the construction budget for community enhancements and opportunities and benefits. Someone mentioned earlier how vague that was, and it strikes me as something I still can't figure out what that means. However, there is a Model CBA and a resolution that was signed in 2012. It was developed after more than four years by a collaboration of a host of community members and stakeholders. I believe there were over 30 involved in that collaboration. There were two projects that the Model CBA was modified to utilize on the Kelly Butte Interstate Renovation Project, which, as of today, are 90% complete. The Kelly Butte is done. The remaining project is 90% complete. The numbers that are in surpassed the goals that were set at the outset. The numbers that are in are amazing by any account. I think we've done a few presentations to community on what those numbers actually equate to in terms of contractors, minority contractors, and the workforce. This is a formula that we believe is a recipe for success. And we would urge you to not defer to multiple other imitations of what the Model CBA is, but to use the CBA intact because it's a proven vehicle for success. The Metropolitan Workforce Alliance, which is Maui, would be happy to provide you with a presentation. At the December Council, if that's what you'd like to see, we've been attempting to provide this, this data to you for quite some time, but have been prevented by numerous barriers. But the data is amazing. There are a number of community folks who would be happy to testify to how they participated in the process. And I might mention that this is not a union agreement. It's an agreement that serves the entire community. I would conclude by asking the council to review the data before the data from the CBA and the, the other proposed community benefit plans and other plans in the community before deciding on this resolution. I believe that you will be very impressed by those numbers. And I urge you to use the formula that's in place on the resolution, because without having that particular formula, it's doomed to fail.
Mr. Birch, first, just, I know it's going to be a long morning, and we're probably going to be here all afternoon in council, but this is, this is critically important, so we're going to take the time to get it right. First of all, you've given me the presentation on the data, and I've asked that data, I've, that data has been submitted to procurement. And as you know, we've asked procurement that has, is tasked with assessing the track record of the CBA to evaluate the data. You've prepared some data from the community. The city is going to evaluate that and other data and report to council. So to your first point, the city is taking very seriously the information that, that the group has, has put together, and I appreciate the briefing you gave me. To, to the second point, though, about deferring on the resolution, and I'm going to ask this to Fred when he comes back, but you're hearing, you're hearing a tension in this hearing between wanting to get it right on opportunity and contracting, but also wanting to put a hard cap on the cost and launch the process. And one of the challenges that I'm, that is occurring to me as I'm listening to the excellent testimony, is that, for some, they cannot be resolved today. And so one of the options will be to defer six months to a year deciding on the fate of the building, which will bring Mr. Wittenberg back with, with, with a lot of vinegar, because we'd be postponing. Or we would launch a process but agree to have the right people at the table working out the contracting piece. The resolution, as I read it, is thin on specifics. And, and so someone has to come and prepare what, what is our expectations, and what does accountability look like. But it is very clear in terms of cost. It's 1%. So if, if, as you look at this proposal, can you separate cost from the specifics? In other words, can the council move forward today agreeing to allocate the money with a process to determine how it will be invested? Because otherwise, we're, you know, I, I've got a couple of my colleagues saying that there has to be precision on the overall cost of this project. What we would essentially potentially be doing is deferring indefinitely launching the project, because we wouldn't be clear about cost. The one thing this thing does very specifically is it allocates the cost. It does not with any specificity explain how we're going to spend that money, and that is the process that, that we're going to need your guidance going forward. But can you separate out, can you, as, as you're giving us advice today, can you separate out those two issues?
It's a difficult decision. And I say this because there have been monies thrown or committed to other plans since the Model CBA began. Those did not use the formula. And I would venture to guess that they are not nearly as successful as the one that had the Model CBA used. Now, if you propose to commit $1 million, I'd say if that's a hangup, or 1%, yeah, 1%, saw that, you would take it. If you propose to commit to 1 million, I would say, set it aside, but don't commit it to a process until you have the proper information in front of you to make that call as to where, how that money will be.
Well, let me, let me jump in there, and we'll get Fred to respond. But when I read this draft resolution, I don't think we've committed to a process. As I understand, this resolution, it was to set a, to set a parameter that we're going to spend 1%. And then, then come to your commission and, and to the community and say, well, we've got, as it says in the resolution, we have a number of, of processes underway and that we're utilizing now to improve the utilization of MWESP firms. Go look at those and fit them in to a budget of 1%. So I, I'll get, I'll get the drafters of the resolution to give their version of it. But that was how I read it, is this doesn't say how, this just says how much.
Mayor, I may, for the record, that's what concerns me. You have a model. You have a process, and yet multiple times over the last two years, there have been other proposals that didn't use the model, didn't have the data in front of them. So my concern is that it is too loosely designed and does not have the language in the Model CBA to help direct the money to a process that the folks have worked on.
And to clarify, the parks process was not required under the previous resolution. The, the previous resolution referenced projects of at least $15 million that we would use the CBA. So that's why we used a, a modified process for the two smaller parks projects. I share your concerns on this bigger one. It seems like the 2012 resolution did call for a more extensive process. Thank you.
Thanks. Good morning.
Good morning, Members of the Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm here today as a member of the commission, of the ECPC. One of the recommendations that I would like to present and put forward for adoption and implementation is the five recommendations items as per the City of Portland Auditor, the Audit Services Division of the City Procurement Process for Intervation. So in order to make a meaningful contribution to leveling the playing field is of essence in the adoption and implementation of those recommendations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council, for, for allowing me to be here today. And I would like to move or speak to the third recommendation. And in order for us, our commission, to be effective in analyzing data and collecting the information, a half-time person is not enough, and we need a full-time staff for us to get all the data that we need for moving forward.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Commissioners for having us here today. I'm Maurice Roman, one of the Commissioners for the ECPC. And one of the things, as far as with this resolution, I also feel it's too vague and would like to have that postponed. I think that the dollar value that's identified, there's not enough clarity as far as how those dollars are being used, what the leverage points. I know in the CBA, there's a lot of leverage, so dollars that were committed will be able to be leveraged through the pre-apprenticeship programs and a series of other social equity groups and members. And so I don't see any leverage positions there. I see a dollar that's just being allocated, almost seems 1%, although it sounds like a good number. We really don't know if 1% is too much or too little. And so I'd like to have a little bit more conversation about what the actual dollars, what the right fit is, and how we could use those, leverage those dollars.
So Maurice, let me, let me offer a suggestion, because I think, I think we're, there may be more agreement here than disagreement, but there's also trust but verify, and then there's who's at the table making the decisions. So we haven't had a work session on CBAs. We haven't, we haven't had the council presentation on CBAs and our track record. We haven't had a council work session on a range of contract issues, including frankly inviting this, this city chartered panel to come and advise us. And you have, I think, four or five recommendations today. And what we have before us is simply an aspirational goal, to set aside 1%, and Fred is being admonished to whatever it is, to stay within the budget. If the council were to proceed today by adopting a resolution that says we are spending $1 million, excuse me, 1%, I'm, well, he said we could spend less too. We're negotiating against ourselves. If we said 1%. And then, it seems to me, one other option, because we don't want to hold this project in abeyance, we, we don't have six months to a year to continue to work. What if, what if we adopted the resolution with a clear process for incorporating your voices in the crafting of how the money would be spent? In the context of lessons learned from the CBA, and whatever advice you have for us about how to maximize these investments, because that's the goal. Everyone here shares the same goal of making sure that at the end of the process, as many people as possible benefit, get apprenticeship training, create opportunity, have a chance to develop their skills, participate in a major capital project. Can't, can't we do both? Or, I mean, can't, can't we set the goal and then agree to sit down and hammer out the details? And if not, why not?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a lot, it's a complicated question and a complicated answer, and I try to be brief because of the way we're looking at trying to incorporate the community organizations and the pre-apprenticeship organizations and the trades themselves to have that flow through. We have a lot of communications between all those groups in order to say, okay, what do you need to make sure that there's outreach, adequate outreach, to make sure that people that historically have been underutilized can have those opportunities and the awareness of the opportunities. And then you look at the contractors and say, how does technical assistance actually work for those contractors that you look at as far as this particular type of project? So because you're asking so many people, so many questions, I sit on the Community Benefits Plan. I chair that committee. I also sit on the Labor Management Oversight Committee for the Community Benefits Agreement. So it's really, I think, it's really difficult to kind of put ourselves in that box and say, okay, this is, this is where we're going to sit. Because at the end of the day, until we get all the input from all those groups, we really don't know whether or not 1% is enough, or 1% is not, not enough. And so I think that by having that earlier conversations, get the input from everyone so that we can all agree that this is the way that we're moving forward, and this is the dollars that we feel like we need to actually have the most success, I think is vital to have a successful program.
So, I mean, isn't that just inviting the first budget overrun? Because the committee's not going to come back and say you're, you should spend less than 1%. If anything, they're going to say more than 1%.
So I, I would hope that by leveraging dollars and actually having input, I think that we could actually know where those dollars are being spent. Right now, we're saying 1%, but we're not saying whether or not that 1%, what percentage of that 1% is actually going for technical assistance, what actually is going for outreach for people that are interested in this industry, what percent is actually going to help the pre-apprenticeship programs. We, we, you know, I think that that's the, once we get the input from those groups, I think then we could actually come up with, and we'd hope that it'd be less than 1%.
So you can accept a 1% ceiling and, and work on the allocation amongst all those activities within that 1%?
I, I guess the question I would have for you, how do you came up with 1%? How, what, what was the basis to determine 1%? Because if, that's why we're trying to determine ourselves as a group, as individuals and community, to determine a fair equitable percentage. Now, is it a fair 1%? I don't know, because we don't have the data to, and the people to come up with that number. So then my question to you will be, is how do you determine that 1% is equitable for what we're trying to do?
All right, we'll get, we'll get the staff to respond to that, as to how they came up with 1%.
So Mr. Birch and Mr. Roman, you both worked a lot with me in 2012 on setting up that previous community benefits agreement. I don't have the exhibits. I don't have the exhibit to the resolution in front of me right now. Can you refresh all of our memories as to how we decided on the level of support in the model CBA?
And so the model CBA was, um, a little different, because that was a community coming to, um, the mayor and the commissioners with a concept. Um, it's, uh, it was bubbled up from the community coming and saying, this is what we feel. And so four years prior to bringing that to you, we actually had those conversations with all the participating parties that you saw, and that's where we had came up and said, okay, we feel like this is a good number for these types of projects. This is a different project. I think that we can come up with a number that actually, um, can meet or exceed goals. And I just have a few stats, I know that you guys haven't seen this, but as far as for minority apprenticeship participation, the goal is set at 18% on the Kelly Butte project, we went over 50%. Um, and the projects complete, um, for African-American firms participating on the Kelly Butte project and the maintenance facility project, um, that dollar value exceeded that which was valued at the entire period of disparity study. So we have a model that works, um, has a lot of players involved, and so it's just a matter of making sure that, um, whatever we're setting, we're not, we're utilizing taxpayer dollars the most effectively that we possibly can. I feel like we can do that. I think that we need more time to be able to set up and have that conversation with all the stakeholders. And I think that, and the comment of whether 1% is the right number, we don't, we don't know that, you know, the, you know, we don't know if, where that number came from either.
Okay, well, we'll get them to respond. Thank you very much. Other points that any of you want to make sure?
Just in, just in general, um, to point out is that, in general, you know, the, the commission, the ECPC group and individuals, we're all interested in doing the maximum for the less, because we don't want to have a handout. We, we don't want to perceive as that. We, we want to do the right thing as the commission. And that's what we're interested on, is making sure that that 1%, that you get the best for the bank, and that you get out something out of it and include it ourselves, so it's the maximum benefit allowed.
So Marcella, you know, you've, you've been working in this field for a long time, and you have tremendous credibility on this issue with me, so.
Hope so. Thank you.
Again, we're, we all share a set of values. We're, we're trying to figure out the best way forward. Council adopted a CBA framework and said we encourage, courage the city to experiment with this model. It was not handed down biblically, it was a concept, and with all due humility, we expected to refine it and make it better. We expected it would have weaknesses and strengths. The problem is, we don't currently have that data. It does not help the discussion to cherry pick numbers and say this proves it's been successful. We have to have an independent review of these projects to figure out what worked and what didn't, because you are just as committed as we are to fixing, to making it work as well as possible. So that has not been done yet. But we, we can all pull numbers, and we can put numbers out there and say this proves the point. Until we have an independent review, we, none of us here, up here, can make that judgment.
Correct.
Other than we're committed to the outcomes, which is expanding opportunity. And what I'll want to see when we scrub the numbers is, has it really resulted in people benefiting, or are we creating a lot of process along the way? Is it people or middle people? Is it institutions taking their piece or not getting to people on the ground? That's one of the questions I'm going to have, because I don't want to create bureaucracy around this process and not see the money filter through to people. And frankly, not a single person in this room can answer that question right now, until there's been a, an independent review. So we have to do something about this building, or it's going to fall down. I have never, in my seven years on the council, I, and you'll correct me, Michael, I, I do not remember any time where the council has said specifically 1% is going to go to creating opportunity. I, I have often here heard that, that there's not enough accountability. Well, you can't be more accountable than having a percentage. You can agree or disagree with the percentage. I would not argue it should go less, but, but I would say, Dan's point about it's, you know, it may be a ceiling, but maybe 1% is the right number. We'll ask OMF about that. But for purposes of moving this project forward, we have to have some agreement as to how we're going to create opportunity. And the proposal on the table is 1%. And what I'm hearing is, not sure what 1% means and want to look at the details. And, and to me, that's, that's, that's what we would do over the next year, with your assistance, to get that right. So I, I, again, I don't see us work at odds here. I think, I think it's, it's, it's a different approach, perhaps, but I think we share the same outcome. And, and one of the important things for me is that we, once and for all, decide the question of the fate of the Portland Building. Because if it's not this issue, it'll be another issue, and we'll be back here a year or two years from now, still futzing on this, and I'm done futzing. Either we're going to fix it, or we're going to do something else, but in fairness, we've got to call the question. Even Portlandia is beginning to shed tears up there, as she's watching. And remember, Bud Clark famously said on her, on Portlandia's birthday, that she's held up better than the building, which was a heck of a comment. And I think we have.
True.
It's incumbent on us to act. So I appreciate your comment, your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your willingness to do this work with us. Thank you.
As you're calling the next three up, go ahead.
Three more.
Yeah.
Okay, three more.
They are Jeff Moreland, Hai Pei, and Nate McCoy.
While they're coming up, uh, let's do a time check here, since this is the end of public testimony on this, um, I'm going to propose that we get staff back up and answer questions and see if the council's ready to proceed. We have some other things on our agenda today. My proposal would be that we try to work till 1:00, um, and, uh, and try to get it all done by 1:00. If we can't, uh, we'll probably, I have a 1:30, and Commissioner Fritz and I have a 2:00, so, uh, we might need to come back at 2:00 and be late for that. We'll figure that out, but I know it's.
I can't, I can't come back at 2:00.
You can't come back at 2:00. Okay, so we're not coming back. So what we'll do is, well, here's my proposal, then we'll work till 1:00, and we'll, anything that has to be carried over will be carried over to tomorrow afternoon, because we have a council meeting tomorrow afternoon. Does that work?
That's good.
Okay, just had to do our housekeeping. Sorry, bear with us and welcome. You'd like to be first.
Hi, my name is Hai Pei. Actually, I'm the owner of the, um, Gallerist Gift to San Bishop at Portland Building, which is, um, I have a same situation who speak, uh, who Chang Xin. So my father bought this store since 1991, so I used to work with him since that time, which is a long time, and my father passed away 10 years ago. And, and right now, we, yeah, since one year ago, we're trying to sell the business, because it's slowing down, and, you know, I cannot work there anymore, but I do cannot get a, you know, this long, this term contract anymore, so we kind of struggling right now. And then, so I just want to know, you know, please understand our situation, and that store has kind of our family business, so, yeah, please, uh, understand, and that's what I came for it, and thank you for bringing to speak, you know, our situation. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you. Thank you. You'd like to be next?
I'll go next. My name is Nate McCoy. I'm the executive director of Namak Oregon, which is an advocacy and membership group that represents minority contractors in our community. We're really about trying to eliminate barriers to full and profitable participation on public and private projects. Um, I'm really here today to commend the, uh, count, I mean, the commissioners and mayor for the appointment of the Equitable Contracting Commission. That's moving the right step to ensure accountability and transparency in the process. Um, a little bit about my background, I've been afforded the opportunity to have worked for both Commissioner Dan Saltzman, as well as Nick Fish, um, with the Portland Housing Bureau, where I was a senior construction manager overseeing a lot of the housing projects. They get, had a great opportunity to give me leadership and voice to the community, working with minority contractors. And I can tell you that without a CBA, without a lot of these community benefits plans, the Bureau was able to excel in a lot of ways within our contracting community, um, and really supporting the growth and capacity building of a lot of minority contractors. Within Namak Oregon, we represent, uh, I would argue, a bulk of the minority contractors in the community, um, and we see this project as an opportunity to engage effectively in a way to advance a lot of the stuff we're talking about today. I'm very moved by a lot of Nick Fish's comments, uh, related to where we are in this process. To date, Namak Oregon has not, uh, once been identified as somebody who could contribute to this conversation. We're very well positioned to be a part of this conversation, so I'm really here in a way to, um, put us on the radar for you guys, that we're here to be a part of the conversation, help work out the 1% allocation in any way that it might direct funding in the appropriate areas. I would say that as we're collecting data and trying to really do research on the effective use of a CBA, if that is the direction we want to go, um, that we also start tracking not only just the apprenticeship, um, and workforce hours that are participating on projects, but also looking at what people are doing when they journey out. Are these people getting real jobs? Are these people being tracked, uh, and successfully finding work, and not just sitting in a hall, um, and not really being utilized? ODOT, BOLI, um, a lot of other organizations are doing research with PSU. I've had a chance to meet with some of those researchers, and we're finding that there's not a lot of research and data talking about our people retaining jobs. You know, works, workforce and training programs are great, and they should be used, but ultimately, if you go through these programs and you're not afforded a real job and a real opportunity, what have we done for our community? So as we think about these community benefits, plans, agreements, I think we should also spend time thinking about how we continue with these people who go through these trades, and ensuring that they're actually filling, you know, these jobs. Because as most minority contractors will tell you, the more capacity they build within their business, the more they're going to recruit and retain people that look like them in their communities. So if people aren't getting opportunities, we're not creating jobs. So that's kind of what we're about, and we want to make sure that we're a part of this conversation. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jeff Moreland. I'm, uh, the owner of Raymore Construction. Uh, we're a large employer, we employ 35 people, 90% of our employees are minority, either Hispanic or African-American. I'm also on the board of National Association of Minority Contractors. And, uh, the issue that I really have today is, like has been said, and one of the comments that you made, Commissioner Fi- Fish, is, uh, my concern over the fact that we're looking at broadening things without having the data. And I know the way the resolution is written, the third resolution is written, but I also heard the testimony of Mr. Ba and Mr. Miller, which that just concerns me, that we don't know how it's currently, you know, working, especially when we historically have had, you know, you look at the city auditor's report, and you look at a lot of the baseline numbers, and there's just concern about how minorities have benefited, and women have benefited in the contracting community. And me being a contractor for 20 years, I've witnessed a lot of this. So my concern for you guys as a commission is, I know you have to move forward with it, but my concern is the way it's written and the testimony of the people that wrote it is broadening something and opening it up more without vetting out whether what's happening is fixing the issues that were at hand in the beginning, and that's my concern.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you both. Okay, anyone else wants to speak on this item? Come on up.
Yes, my name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Watchdog PDX. I'm a little bit skeptical myself on this Portland Building project. I think when we start reaching a number of 195 million on reconstruction, there needs to be a number when we meet that we say, hey, maybe we need to look at building something new. I mean, this is too high a price. I'm really surprised that the building was even put on the historical status. I do want to have Portlandia moved. I want to have the Portland Building put up for sale. I'd like to see some prices that we come in at. I want to look at the Multnomah County Courthouse, work with Multnomah County to purchase that property. I want to build a brand-new building in that location, and I want to use the remaining funds when we sell the Portland Building to purchase that Multnomah County Courthouse, and also to apply additional funds to building the new building. If we go in that direction, the Portland Building can remain there, keep the employees there, work with Multnomah County in a plan that we can build something new. 195 million to reconstruct this building, to me, it's outrageous. It's outrageous. We need to look at the cost of building something new. I haven't heard any numbers. Why aren't we hearing numbers on that? What is the difference? What's the difference in the value there? I want to see a new building built. I want to see something brand-new. Can we get a, a different resource to help build that building, such as they're doing on the new courthouse they're building from the state? Are there ways to get them to match some money on this? Why not build something new? Why not, at this time, admit that that was a mistake, the Portland Building? It hasn't lasted a tremendous amount of years. We all agree on that. If anybody in this room disagrees, that building should have lasted at least 75-plus years. Has it done that? No, it hasn't. Is it up to today's seismic standards? Absolutely not. Then why should we dump a tremendous amount of more money in there when we can possibly build something new, get much more longevity out of it? And I think, in my opinion, it's going to be more value added to the city to do that. And to hold on to this building, it does not make any sense to me. And the, the 195 million, I would like to see various bids on that, because that number just seems very outrageous to me at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, let's bring Fred back up and other staff. Oh, I'm sorry, just quickly, please.
Um, thank you, council. I, I would like to thank, uh, Lightning for his incredible devotion to the city and everything he has done. I was also particularly moved by Kristal Alinsky's speech about allocating money for homeless resources. Um, just to tell you about my experience, last night, I slept in a box around 14th with newspapers about your emergency declaration, and they, they kept me somewhat warm, and that's because I don't have a affordable housing in this city. And I think this passionate need for jobs and housing are incredibly important, and I'm incredibly important by the move towards equity in construction, and I'm very impressed with that. But I think when you, you, when you decide to patch together something that's somewhat broken, you can run into a lot of problems. And I think Lightning's point about the architecture is very compelling, and I think a, a full review of the structure would be helpful towards having a longstanding, permanent, good governance in this city, which we clearly don't have. We have a historic loss of faith. The public feels that there's been breach of trust on numerous issues. So I think building a firm foundation will be good, a house on sand or rocks, some kind of phrase like that. And I, I want you to know I'm doing well, and I'm committed to this city, too, but I'm living far away because of the incredible price of, of housing, including the price of my family's, uh, emotional problems. But I am really happy to be here and honored to see you all, and hope you make the right decision, and hope you give due respect to all of the excellent points that have been made here. And I would like to see some recognition for the citizen activists who spend a lot of time and dedication, and I find these meetings very difficult, very hard to pay attention, very challenging issues, and I want to thank you for your leadership, too, because I think often you are victimized and misunderstood and probably have very extremely difficult decisions to make. But I think this definitely is one of them, and it, it deserves a great deal of patience and good im, ideas to come from many different kinds of people, so we can actually build a city that is not a laughingstock in terms of this massive runaway gentrification and pushing people out of the city, and this sort of, I don't know what it's going to be, San Francisco.
Thank you. Take care. Okay, Fred, yeah, come on up and bring any folks that are needed to address the, some of the questions and issues that have come up, including the, the, the most recent ones, which are, how do we get to 1% in this, uh, in this proposed 1064 resolution?
Okay, finally, I think I can.
What about the engagement of the commission in the next phase of the work, so?
I think I can handle this, uh, in very few minutes, but if I need help, there are lots of helpers here. Uh, the first comment I'd make is, and Kelly Ball is going to help me with this, but following up on Jim's comment, there's a website with all of this information, all the reports, everything else on it, which is?
Okay.
So all the information.
Dot gov/PortlandBuilding.
All that information is out there, and, uh, we do have a public involvement communication plan that she, Kelly has worked up, once we have approval and we know where we're headed. So I think we can, we can address that. Turning to the, the commission and the 1%. The 1% was taken out of the community benefits agreement resolution, that's the amount that was there. And so there's a, there's a .25 and a .75, which added to 1.
So the one that I have from the exhibit in the resolution was .75.
The one that I have from the exhibit in the resolution was .75 and .5, and it was of the total project cost, not of the hard construction costs.
Of the total?
Yes.
I guess it depends a little bit on how it's defined, but my information, and I'm looking-
Come on up.
It was .75 on the, and for continuing construction training outreach and recruitment of the total project cost, and then it was .5 of the technical assistance fund of .5 of the total project cost.
Kristy Moody, Procurement Services. I believe the 1% came from the modified CBA in which was implemented on the Two Water Bureau projects.
What I was quoting from was from the exhibit on that model CBA.
On the model CBA, and then there was a modified CBA that was implemented on the Two Water Bureau projects, and because of where they were at when the model was passed, and the Water Bureau had not allocated that money because they were in the middle of the procurement process, that piece was negotiated.
And was it of the total project cost or the hard construction costs?
I don't remember that. I can get that to you.
Thank you.
So in any case, with the number I took from the 1%, saying, let's not have any disagreement on the number, let's just accept the number and say we're committed to it. And that was point one. Turning to the commission's comments, I guess I'm surprised because I might have thought that they would be here supporting this, because Brian's a member of our management team looking at the building, as well as chair of the committee. And my discussion with Brian would be, the commission may be the body that should allocate the funds, because we're looking for a public body, something that exists, let's not add administrative costs, and maybe that's a way to pay for staffing, which was one of their concerns, because that would be an additional burden, and I think arguably some of that money could be used. So I would think, unless someone really wants to do the original CBA, which water didn't, parks didn't, so on, if we go to the modified, it would seem to me we're generally in agreement on the 1%, and I would have thought the commission would be interested in a role in that.
Well, I was assuming they would have one. I guess one comment I would have on the percentage is that I'm not sure what the right model number is either, but there's a big difference between building new reservoirs on Kelly Butte and this project, not just because one's a building and the other's a water project, but because a big portion of the total cost of this project involves moving thousands of city employees out of a building, renting another building, and moving them back. That's an atypical project cost for a public works project. So if .75, or, sorry, if 1% is reasonable, I'm sorry, if 1.5% of total construction cost is reasonable on a public works project, just saying, that's what's in the model agreement, then maybe 1% is reasonable in this project, given that, what, thirty million dollars or so-
Correct.
-the cost of this project is the cost of moving people out, putting them in another building, and moving them back. That's not construction cost. It's not architectural design cost. It's just a cost of doing business for the course of this project. Again, I'm not subscribed to 1% as a hard and fast number. I like the idea of what the team has brought forward here, and that is of saying at the outset, it's a one hundred and ninety-five million dollar project, period, including construction, including design, including moving people in and out, including being responsible with our tenants, all the other goals that we're going to have, and 1% of that construction cost is going to go to workforce training and the other elements that are outlined here.
Mayor, another example of that, just to make the point, is that the Water Bureau will be coming to council sometime in the next few months to talk about the fortifying the pipes under the Willamette River.
Right. Fifty million dollar project, plus.
Thank you for highlighting that, Mayor. The, it is a heavy-on-technology, light-on-workforce project because of the way, because of the technology of putting a bladder within an existing pipe. So there's some equipment and technology. It's not a big public works project, just by definition, so it isn't necessarily well-suited to the CBA model reservoir project, which is heavy on men and women doing lots of work over a period of time. It is better suited. That was sort of the original vision. Commissioner Fritz's example of parks, even though it fell below the threshold, she tailored it to make it adapted to a park. The point here is it was always a concept that meant to be adapted. It meant it was a concept, and we are adapting it to meet the realities. And I think in this instance, it's a question of what's the right percentage?
Mayor, may I make a process suggestion, given the hour? Really only the first of these three resolutions needs to be voted on today in terms of getting the bureau moving forward, given that we have a commission who we recently appointed who's asked for more time to discuss the community benefits plan. We could perhaps hold over the second two resolutions to get the questions answered for the second one and to have a little more discussion on the third one.
Move into that. What do you think, Fred?
Well, I'd rather have them all. You're right that the first one is the most important one. I thought the equalization, I really don't think there's much debate about. I think when you get it back, you're going to do what Commissioner Fritz suggested, but I understand you need some time. On the 1%, I think the value, at least partially, is to separate it from the project per se, because all the time before, there was something like an eight-month period before signatures could be gathered, and that would cost us another million bucks. I want to just say, here's the pot of money, and I frankly don't care. If you guys wanted to say one and a half percent, three-quarters of a percent, I just think the principle of saying, we're aimed at this, you go out and do the best practices you can, involve people, and come back with a recommendation which we can improve, I'm not sure why that should be objectionable.
I'd be inclined to do that at this point, and then frankly, let the commission come back to us with a recommendation to modify it if they'd like.
Fred, say that again, because you just said something very important that may capture two votes. You don't care where it lands in terms of the percentage, but the most important thing you said is you can deliver this project for under one hundred and ninety-five million.
Correct.
Okay, other questions?
I have a couple of other questions, Mayor.
Please.
So we've had three small businesses, all of whom are minority-owned, come before us and say, timeout, this project is going to, is going to either put us out of business or hurt us financially. One is a gentleman who runs the larger restaurant, another is the woman who runs the convenience store, and the third is my favorite bento restaurant within walking distance of City Hall. So how are we going to cushion the blow to those three small businesses during this transition?
If I were sitting where you are, I'd probably direct me to come in with a recommendation.
Hi, Mayor, can we make a friendly amendment that Fred be directed? These are family-owned businesses that have provided great services to our community, just like the daycare provider, and we've gone to some lengths to cushion the blow. Can we direct Fred to come back with a plan?
I think he has just been directed.
Okay.
So, no, I think you should do that, Fred. It doesn't have to be in the resolution, but obviously I have a sense of council that we want a socially responsible plan for how we operate as a landlord in this situation, because that's, again, not quite the normal situation for city government, but it is here in this particular block.
And that one gentleman's testimony about the cloud of uncertainty over his business, rendering the value of his business almost zero, that's very compelling, and we are the sole contributor to that cloud, and I think we have an obligation, if not a legal obligation, a moral obligation, to see if we can provide a question.
And another reason to move ahead is to get the analysis that would tell us, are we going to leave people in the building? In which case, it's a different proposition for the businesses. So I would like to move ahead, but I will come back with a suggestion on how to handle the relocation or whatever's handled.
And the other thing, Fred, has to do with the, if we are to proceed today, and Mayor, then there's a process for deciding how we craft the equity and opportunity piece of this project, which is important to council. We have the ECPC, which the council's established, which is made up of distinguished people in our community who care about this issue and have history. We also have other groups in the community that have strong opinions on this subject. And so I would hope that through that process, that NAMAC and other groups that have strong opinions and lots of history are welcome to fully participate in developing a plan that would come back to council for review and approval.
That's our intention.
Okay. Further questions for Fred? Then let's take a vote, please, on the first of the resolutions, which is 1062.
Novick?
This is obviously a big, fat, important issue, and it's critically important that we address the concerns about the building. We've got employees that are already in an unhealthy atmosphere. It's going to get worse. We've got a building that is not seismicly sound. And we've done, the OMF has done extensive analysis of alternatives, and I want to reiterate that regardless of the historic character of the building, the analysis shows that proceeding with renovation is the appropriate course. Obviously, we are not today committing to spend one hundred and ninety-five million dollars on anything. This is the first step in the process. I really appreciate the analysis that OMF has done. I think that our employees will really appreciate the fact that we're finally addressing the concerns with this building, and I'm very pleased to vote aye.
Thanks. I appreciate those comments and the diligence of the staff. Thank you for multiple briefings and the work sessions. It's been a good way to get to this point. We still have city employees in other buildings in disgraceful conditions, and so that is only, this is only a start. This is a building that the rents can pay for the mortgage, so I'm able to support it. Aye.
On the fly. Fred, I want to thank you and your team for the way you've managed a very complicated process, and I don't remember a process or an issue that was more complicated in some respects. And I've had a lot of conversations with friends and people I meet about this, and it's a hard thing to explain. We're talking about a lot of money. And I think instinctively, people say, well, you know, if you've got a building with these problems, then ditch it, level it, do something else. And I appreciate the comments of my two colleagues. You have walked us through all the options, and I'm persuaded this is the most responsible approach because it's the least cost. It meets a set of values we've clearly identified, things like proximity and accessibility. And frankly, it allows us to start thinking about how we configure our workforce, and as you know, I'm very keen on having BES all together. I think it's, I've had some concerns about the bureau being dispersed, and I want them all under the same roof with their leader. So this has been an incredibly complicated and difficult process, but I think you've been the captain of the ship, leading us through turbulent waters. You've done a great job. And I also want to say that ultimately, since I'm not a developer, and I don't play a developer on TV, it is our, part of our job is to put good people in place and ask them to give us their best advice. We have a chief administrative officer, a CFO that I fought for, an independent panel of experts who do development, and some peers from other levels of government saying this is the right approach. Well, with some humility, I'm going to accept those recommendations because the coming of people know a heck of a lot more about this than I do. And I also appreciate that in taking this action today, we're not resolving all the questions, but we are resolving one question that's important to all of us up here, which is, this project will not exceed one hundred and ninety-five million dollars. And that's the last conversation we'll have about that issue. So thank you, everyone, for your quality of your work and your professionalism, and I'm going to vote aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I think that, I truly hope this is the last conversation we have about the one hundred and ninety-five million. I'm not necessarily persuaded this will be the last conversation, but I'm very hopeful. And I'm so hopeful because I really appreciate the good work that OMF staff and everybody's put in, but also particularly the stellar advisory committee that you've assembled, people who really speak from experience, because, you know, my original instinct when I heard it was ninety-five million was, you know, let's demolish the thing and build something ourselves, build something nice and shiny, and more sustainable, more energy-efficient, and more seismic-resistant. I realize, though, that there are a lot of, you know, political logistical issues that are probably insurmountable to do that, and so I am prepared to support this recommendation that has been brought to us with a lot of thought about how to make this work. I still await the answer about whether we move people or not, or we stage them or not, but, you know, my tendency is to think we probably need to move everybody. But nevertheless, this is a well-thought-out process, and I'm pleased to support it. Aye.
Hales?
Fred, thank you. Ken, the rest of the team, thank you. When I asked Fred and Ken to, like me, return to public service for something of a victory lap, to come back into these difficult issues, it was in part because I knew that Fred could help guide us through this kind of very complex, very high-stakes question for the city of Portland. So thank you. Well done, and more great work ahead. This is a day that we wish we didn't have to be here for. We wish that the Portland building had been built so well the first time, and that corners weren't cut, and that it hadn't leaked, and all those other woulda, coulda, shouldas. I wish that we didn't have to do this, but we do. And then the question is, is this the most responsible thing to do under difficult circumstances? And I think you have, I've had some of the same reactions and skepticisms that my colleagues have had. I think all of us in a situation like this, there's got to be a cheaper alternative than that. But it appears that that's not the case, that building a new building would be more expensive than repairing this one, even as odious as the bill for that repair might be for all of us. We figured out a responsible way to pay for this with what the bureaus pay in rent over time and with a mortgage that we carry for a long time in order to do the right thing. So again, this is a difficult conclusion to get to, but you've gotten us there in the right way. So I also believe that you have put us in a position to say to you, you have one hundred and ninety-five million dollars. Repair this building. Get it done right. Make us proud, and no more discussion about whether it's one hundred and ninety-six or one hundred and ninety-seven or one hundred and ninety-eight. And we should take this opportunity to empower this effective public servant with that budget and say, that's it. We've done this before in other public works in this community, particularly transit projects, so it can be done, but you've put us in a position to exercise the kind of discipline that the public would hope for from their city council. And thank you very much for doing that. Aye. Let's take up the next one, please.
1063, Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
This is on the rents equalization. One of my core principles has always been, who pays, who benefits, and is that fair? And under the resolution as currently structured without the amendment, the beneficiaries are those who will be in the Portland building after it's fixed. And the bureaus that lose are the ones who are currently paying higher rents in the nineteen-hundred building. To be very clear, I am not the commissioner in charge of any of those bureaus. My bureaus will benefit from the resolution as structured, and I can't support it because I don't think that's fair. If we believe in the principle, we should be implementing it as soon as possible, and it's, unfortunately, I can't support it as threatened. No.
Fish?
Just to be clear, when we get an analysis of Commissioner Fritz's amendment, and I understand it, I'm likely to support it, but I don't think it makes this particular resolution fatally flawed, so I will support it. Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Hales?
I agree with Commissioner Fish's comments. Aye. And let's take up the third, please.
1064, Novick?
I'm torn about this because I think it's a reasonable proposal, but I was concerned by the opposition of the members of the Equitable Contracting and Purchasing Committee, so it's out of respect to them and the other committee members who testified that with the assumption that we can reach a reasonable resolution on this issue for today, I'll vote no.
Fritz? Yes, I agree. I don't have the confidence that 1% is the right number, especially of construction costs rather than total costs. I'd like to see a revised resolution, which is why I suggested pulling it back, to include mention of the commission and the Office of Equity and Human Rights, and to be more inclusive in setting up the resolution so that our community partners understand that we are indeed committed to doing the right thing. I know you are, but I, part of the process is having a community benefits agreement rather than something that's handed down- rather than something that's handed down. And we were very careful when we did the community benefits plan for parks, to engage the community in figuring out what that looked like. No.
Fish.
Well, I am, I'm proud to serve on a council that really believes in this concept of opportunity and equity. And as with many noble aspirations, these are very complex matters, and they, the devil truly is in the details, and I know that more than anyone else up here because of the fact that the Water Bureau has hosted the two biggest CBA projects, and has a track record of pushing the envelope on equity and opportunity. So, to me, that's not the question before us. The question is, is this the right framework for moving forward, recognizing that all the hard work follows? And provided, Fred, you follow through on the commitment you've made to the council to bring the commission together to review this, provided we have a subsequent work session on CBAs generally, and how we're doing, because that report is going to be critical to deciding how we move forward with that plan, and provided this comes back to council for our ultimate deliberation, which I think we've committed to on all three scores, I'm comfortable supporting this approach because I do think it's a package. And frankly, while I take this concern about accountability very seriously, there's nothing more accountable than putting a number or a percentage in a legal document and saying we're operating off of that. And if at the end of the day, smarter people than us conclude that that's the wrong figure, then you will come back to us and report that because we want to get it right. But I think this is a suite of actions, and I think in respect to all the work that's been done, they should be adopted as a suite. So, I will vote aye.
Saltzman.
I appreciate the concerns brought forward by the Equitable Contracting Commission members and other public testimony today, but I am persuaded that we can tweak all those details with their help and figure out what the right projects or activities are. But I'm otherwise very comfortable with this determination of 1% community benefit. Aye.
Hales.
Well, I brought forward the resolution to create the Equitable Contracting and Purchasing Commission, and I believe in it very much. And thanks to the discussion that we've had here today, both with members of the commission raising issues, and with our chief administrative officer making commitments to follow through on their concerns, I am going to support this, and here's why. We've said this is a $195 million project. We've said 1% is going to go to these specified purposes. And we've said, we're willing to change that 1% based on what we hear further from the commission and from our administrators. But the top-line number doesn't change. It's still a $195 million project. So, the question is, how much are we going to devote to these purposes as opposed to other hard construction costs that go into the reconstruction of the building? And since we all have that understanding, I think it is better for us to start with a percentage than to start with a question mark, or any confusion that this would just start adding to the cost of the project. That would be a shame if we did that. So, with those understandings that we will return to this issue, and we'll hear more about what the percentage should be and how it should work, I'll support the resolution. Aye.
Mayor, can we take a two-minute compassion break?
We're going to take a two-minute compassion break and come back at half past the hour. Please, and we're going to try to get the rest of this work done with these understandings that items 1079 and beyond, 1079, 80, 81, 82, and 83 are moved to tomorrow's calendar at 2:00 p.m. And we'll try to deal with the rest of them while we're all still here. Could you please take up 1070, 1071, and 1066, which is the item that we brought forward from the consent calendar?
1070, authorize a five-year grant agreement with Volunteers of America for two advocates for the victims and survivors of domestic violence not to exceed $630,000. 1071, authorize a five-year grant agreement with Catholic Charities for an advocate for the victims and survivors of domestic violence not to exceed $315,000. And 1066, accept a grant in the amount of $92,143, appropriate $29,45 for fiscal year 2015-16, and authorize Intergovernmental with the county for domestic violence enhanced response team in, to be partially reimbursed for a police bureau sergeant through December 31, 2017.
Great. Welcome Acting Captain Wendy Steinbrom and Annie Neal from Multnomah County. Welcome you both.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Well, I guess I'll start with 1070. So, 1070 and 1071 are part of a grant that we've applied for and received every year since 2005. And 1070 has to do with contracting for two advocates from Volunteers of America to work in our office. They're cohoused with us, and they work alongside of the domestic violence investigators. And the purpose of having them there is for enhanced services to the survivors. They do things like safety planning, seeking shelter, getting other services and resources for the survivor outside of the actual police investigation. 1071 is for one advocate to do the same thing, work in our office side by side with the investigators. We, I should probably mention that we have a total of eight advocates, and the police bureau's share of it is three, and then Multnomah County's share of it is five advocates. We supply the office space, computers, vehicles for them to drive, because we have two shifts. We have a day shift, and then we have an afternoon shift that respond directly to the scene to help officers out. So, I should mention that that's part of the cost as well. And so, the 1071 is for the one advocate. 1066 is part of a DOJ, United States DOJ grant to supply, this year it'll be .25 FTE of the full-time sergeant assigned to the divert program. And divert is part of the domestic violence unit, but it's the enhanced response team. And they work with really serious offenders and the more serious cases, some of the cases that take a longer time to resolve.
Well, thank you. Welcome, Annie. Welcome.
Well, I'm just here to provide any information or answer any questions if you need it. The domestic violence enhanced response team is what I consider a homicide prevention unit. They do great work. They work collaboratively in a multidisciplinary team with law enforcement doing their investigations and offender accountability, and the victim service partners providing wraparound support for victims to help them beyond the criminal justice case. So, it's great work, and it's been a great partnership for many years.
Great. Thank you both. Questions for the city-county team? Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone want to speak on these items? And if not, then let's take a roll call vote on each of them in turn. Start with 1070.
1070, Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Thank you for your work. Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for all the good work that you do, county, domestic violence, divert team, great work. Aye.
Hales.
Women and families and their safety, it doesn't get more important than that. Thank you both very much. Aye.
1070, Novick.
Thank you very much for your work, and I apologize. Voting first sometimes catches back, I surprise Dill, so I forget to be appropriately polite. Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. And the third one, please.
1066, Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Hales.
Please keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, let's move on.
1072, pay claim of Tasha Jacolin Moore in the sum of $12,500 involving the police bureau.
Good afternoon. It's afternoon now.
Mayor, Mr. Randy Stenquist, liability claims manager for risk management. The ordinance before you will resolve a tort claim filed by Tasha Moore and her attorney. The underlying incident was an arrest in late January of this year following a traffic stop, which led to a vehicle search. She was charged with two offenses, including a drug charge at that time. The officers held back other drug charges from that engagement after having a dialogue with Ms. Moore and an agreement about her acting as an informant for the police in other drug cases. The following week, after failing to meet with the officers, as agreed in the earlier discussion, the officers went to her house and arrested her and booked her on the underlying charges from the week before. The Multnomah County DA later dismissed those charges. Our investigation has revealed that the officers did not follow well-established protocols spelled out in the police directives about working with informants. There is an active internal affairs investigation underway to investigate further, but there's clearly a problem with how it all played out in this particular instance. The directives have been updated further to clarify the responsibilities of command staff to coordinate the processing and review of informant information, and these are currently under review. The proposed settlement of $12,500 compensates the claimant for the loss of her freedom on that February arrest, as well as her attorney fees and costs. Resolving the claim at this point will prevent us from having to spend more money litigating the case and an uncertainty of outcome with that. So, recommend approval of the ordinance.
Great. Thank you, Randy. Questions, if any. Thank you so much. Appreciate the summary. Anyone want to speak on this item? If not, roll call, please.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Mayor, I appreciate you putting this on the regular agenda, and thank you for the explanation. I also appreciate the follow-up in terms of the police protocols and trainings. Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, 1073.
Authorize a five-year lease extension with UPI Commonwealth LLC for the Housing Bureau leased premises at the Commonwealth Building through October 31, 2021.
All right. Second reading, roll call.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Well, this dovetails nicely into the discussion we just had on the Portland building because the lease will be expiring very close to when the Portland building will be reoccupied. Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. Okay, 1074.
Amend contract with Trimet related to the operations and maintenance of the Portland streetcar system to add payment to Trimet for operations, maintenance, and other services for fiscal year 1516 through fiscal year 1920 for $40,490,618.
I understand his request to reschedule this to October 28th. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so ordered. 1075.
Authorize Central East Side interim commercial off-street parking pilot program.
Commissioner Novick.
Colleagues, items 1075 and 1076 are related and have to do with removing regulatory barriers that prohibit, quote, "shared use of parking stalls," which is a main concept being developed in PIBOT's citywide parking strategy. And this will allow such shared use on an interim basis in the Central East Side while permanent code changes are developed as part of the Central City 2035 Plan. In the Central East Side, this idea has been a major theme in the overall panic parking management strategy discussions for the district for over three years. In 2012, PIBOT worked with local stakeholders to develop the Central East Side parking management plan. We learned that on-street parking reaches full occupancy as early as 8:00 a.m., but off-street parking was observed to be heavily underutilized. Additionally, in 2014, PIBOT learned that parking was even more fully subscribed than it was in 2012. Code changes, again, are under development currently as part of Central City 2035 to allow and encourage the more efficient use of existing parking. Those changes are expected to be before the council sometime in 2016. The second ordinance will specifically address parking supply along Southeast Water Avenue that has seen the most job growth since the creation of the Employment Opportunities Subareas in 2006, and has added significant pressure on the on-street parking supply. PDC is in the process of purchasing several vacant parcels from ODOT and intends to develop the site with a significant employment component. Several code provisions prevent this property from currently operating as a parking lot. PDC temporarily allowing parking on the northern most of these blocks will provide immediate relief to the oversubscribed parking system while permanent parking solutions are being pursued. There's been extensive public outreach in 2012 related specifically to this issue, and there's broad support for the commercial parking pilot program. And we talked about this concept of shared parking in our overall parking review a couple of weeks ago. Basically, the idea is, if a bank has a parking lot that is not being used by bank customers, then the bank can rent out those spaces to the general public under this pilot, for example.
Commissioner? I fully support your ordinance, but I have a question. In this concept of shared parking, particularly in the example you used of a bank that might make the space available in the evening hours, would that property owner be subject to a different regulatory framework than a typical property owner that has, that's in the full-time business of providing parking services?
Grant, you want to take a shot at that?
I don't believe that they would. No, I don't. Under this interim program, we're proposing that commercial shared parking would be limited to monthly agreements, at least during this 18-month period, and PIBOT would manage the issuance of those contracts.
Yes, maybe I, let me state it just in plain English. I've heard from a bunch of people that they want to be able to capitalize on those dormant spaces after hours, like bank parking spaces. But one of the, one of the things that'll discourage people from doing that is if we overregulate that use. And you heavily regulate the people that run our full-time parking, right? There's all kinds of rules about what you have to do, and you have to have an operator and equipment. And I'm hoping that we're developing a lighter touch for shared parking since it's more episodic, more opportunistic, and it's not the full-time business of these, of these property owners.
Yeah, that's our approach, and really, removing regulatory barriers is what this ordinance is all about.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Anyone want to read the second one?
1076, authorize temporary commercial parking on Oregon Department of Transportation blocks as part of the Central East Side interim commercial off-street parking pilot program.
Further explanation of this? I know you covered it a minute ago, so, questions?
Grant, is there anything you'd want to add?
Oh, no, you did an excellent job of summarizing what would have been my presentation, so thank you for that.
Good answer.
Actually, Erica Niebel, in conference with you, did an excellent job of summarizing, and I just read my talking points.
Good work. I can't wait to see that done. So, this is great. Okay, anyone want to speak on these items? If not, then they, both 1075 and 1076 pass the second reading. Thank you, Commissioner and Bureau. Now, let's take 1077.
Authorize the Bureau transportation to acquire certain permanent and temporary rights necessary for construction of the East Portland Active Transportation to Transit Project through the exercise of the city's eminent domain authority.
Roll call vote, please.
Novick.
Aye.
Fritz.
Thank you, Commissioner Novick, for getting back to me about my concerns. Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. And 1078.
Amend regulations for marijuana license procedures and requirements to provide a process for converting existing medical dispensaries to recreational retailers and amend hours of operation.
Roll call vote, please.
Novick.
I'd like to thank the commissioner in charge and the rest of the council, and all the stakeholders who've engaged in extensive discussions on this issue over the last few weeks. Aye.
Fritz.
Thanks to the mayor for assigning me the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, and it's been an honor to participate in this extensive community process, particularly working with my staff, Teresa Marquetti, Victor Salinas, Amy Archer in the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, and also Claire Adamsek in my staff. We've, it's a new program. We're going to manage recreational marijuana sales much better than historically our state has managed liquor sales. And I'm looking forward to implementing the program and ensuring the wise and safe use of said legal substance. Aye.
Fish.
I want to thank the ONI staff, and thank all the stakeholders and community members who provided their input and who helped us craft these regulations. I believe the city is taking a balanced approach, trying to be faithful to the intent of the voters, and also to the intent of the legislature, to create the voters, and also to the intent of the legislature, to create the right fit for Portland. These regulations take into consideration the rights of consumers, but the impact on neighborhoods, and the investments of lots of local small businesses. ONI has been working thoughtfully, intentionally, and transparently to create a unique Portland solution, and I believe has found the middle ground. I want to offer my special thanks to my friend and colleague, Commissioner Fritz, who has led this process thoughtfully and openly, which is evident in the final product before us. This is new territory, and everyone, in my judgment, has done their best to find the right answer. Today, I'm pleased to vote aye.
Saltzman.
Well, I want to express all due respect to Commissioner Fritz, and to everybody in the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, and the public who worked hard on these regulations. But I guess if anything, in the ensuing weeks since we first began our discussion in late September, I have become persuaded just that this is regulatory, regulations that are unnecessary. We are, I watch every day in the newspaper on the news, the activities of the OLCC as it moves forward with its march to regulating the same things that we're trying to do here today, and I'm convinced we don't need two layers of regulatory authority. And we don't need, as a city, to be spending a million dollars a year and hiring four to eight people to oversee an effort that I, you know, 21 days into legalization of recreational marijuana, all quiet on the Western Front. So, I am not persuaded that we really need this. This, to me, is regulatory overkill, and it's being duplicated at the state. And I do think that, yeah, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, but I really think this is a regulatory effort that we can't sustain funding for, and I don't think we should mimic what's happening at the state level. So, I respectfully vote no.
Hales.
Well, I just want to join in thanking you, Commissioner, and the ONI staff who worked so hard on this. To your point, Commissioner Saltzman, I think we'll have the opportunity in the future to dial back regulations, which every now and then government actually does, if we turn out to not need all the rules that we've imposed. But we have had bitter experience with having the state operating a system of selling controlled substances that didn't work out very well for neighborhoods and communities. So, an excess of caution in this case, and very new territory to me, is justified. Finally, I just want to note this again, I think we noted it at the hearing, but I often hear from people who say, you know, it doesn't do any good to talk to government, it doesn't do any good to get involved in the political process, things are always decided behind closed doors. And then they come to one of these city council hearings, and they say something smart and new, and we hear them, and we change the plan. And it happened again in this case. And in fact, it happened more than once in this case, where people come to their city council, have their say, and have the five of us listen to them, and make change in this room. And I hope people get to see that, whether it's on television or in person, because it actually happens. Maybe it doesn't happen in Congress. It does actually happen at the state legislature. They should get credit for that, too. But it happens here all the time, and it happened on this issue, and it was one more reason why we should celebrate democracy actually works here. So, thank you all for good work. There was a lot of careful thought on this council to get to this point as well, and I'm very happy that we ended up where we are. Aye. And we are recessed tomorrow at 2:00 p.m.